This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, sorry about the late. We will open up this workshop at four thirty six. All right, and this is to receive a presentation from Elk River Property Development. So, Mr. Russell, if you want to come on up or if you can.
We did get the documents this afternoon. I don't know if you had a chance to see them, but they are in front of you as well.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, staff.
Could you say your name and who you're with for the record?
Yes, for the record, my name is Troy Russell. I work for Elk River Property Development, and I reside in Vanden, Oregon. Lifelong resident of Coos County, your neighbor to the north. I'll be brief. Today, we're, I'm here to talk about the secondary outfall of pump station and pipeline and, and public-private partnerships. I ask, the letter is, is the first thing, I requested a work session early in 2024, and thank you Mayor Cox for, for scheduling this. Second page is a brief. Not brief, it's been years, but a timeline of, of kind of high points in the discussions of City of Port Orford sending their treated effluent water out to the NAP Ranch to be reused instead of disposing of it in the ocean and going away forever. So you can, I won't read through all these, but I will highlight a couple. We'll jump down to December 2016. We purchased a lot from Mr. Raybon on, on 12th Street, tax lot 1011. It's adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. That's important because it, it's our route out. That's where the pump station will be, and that's our route out for the pipeline that eventually runs through town and, and out to the NAP Ranch. But more significantly, it's an opportunity for, for Orford to use that same property as an easement for a, a pipeline back through. So you can perhaps get rid of the pump station on Wyoming, which I think over the years has, has been problematic. Bouncing on down, you can see the planning commission approved the condition of use in 2017. And it's gone down and down and, and occasionally bounces back to the, to the Land Use Board of Appeals. We've been, we've been there for several times, three regarding the pipeline, two for the pipeline, one for an extension and over the word "and," A-N. In June of 2017, Curry County approved the alternative analysis for the, for the effluent use. That's both conditional uses. And, and closing here is a nice letter that the late Jim Auburn wrote in support of that effort to the county commissioners, and it's, it's on the next page. And it kind of sums things up in a, in a nutshell and a, and just a few short paragraphs about the issue with previous systems that, that were here when he first got to Port Orford and, and still paying for the second and the third one. And at the time, before building the third one, the thought was to ship it out to, to the NAPS and couldn't come to an agreement at the time, so here we are. And the last page is all these, all these highlights that, that's, we've been talking about this for nearly 10 years, but we've never come to sign a contract. And this, this last one that's labeled a draft is a master agreement. It's required by the DEQ and, and it was drafted by the Dyer Partnership. Aaron Speckman is, is the engineer we're working with. And it was, just got it back last night from Water Right Attorneys. So this is a, this is a, we think is a fairly good draft, but that's for, that's for you to consider, and we'll discuss it at a future date. And that's about all I have today. I said I'd be short.
Yeah, and that, so, I mean, that basically until this afternoon, we didn't have these documents on our hands. So, I mean, I don't see us putting them on the agenda for tonight. We, we could, but to me, it'd be better maybe to put this back out next month than have it on the agenda. Did anybody come up with any questions?
For Troy in this short timeframe?
Troy, the agreement, did you speak of the potential or failed agreement with the NAPS? That's the worst I heard of that. What, how did that go? That just didn't work out, or?
I wasn't here at the time.
Yeah.
But solids have been disposed out there in the past when, and that, that happens only occasionally. But that, they wanted to, at the time before, it was the El Nino winter of 97, 98, where the, the system that was built in the Fordoon, much like a leach field in the Fordoon between Garrison Lake and the beach, it got blown up. And that's when you had to come up with an emergency system. So I, I was in the area at the time, but I was, Jim and I were building Bananoon, so didn't pay much attention to anything other than working daylight to dark. Sorry, I don't have much information.
That's all right. I just, I hadn't heard that before, so I'm interested.
And you have to treat it one more step to get it to your phase, right? From what we have going on right now?
It has to be chlorinated, just so it doesn't get, this is not a scientific term, but skanky in the pipeline because it's miles of pipe. And, and the DEQ oversees all that. I mean, you, you, you have to report, we, as you do now on your present outfall, have to report to them, and, and we would as well.
So that was, so I missed a few years here, but it looks like nothing much happened in those years. Our last understanding was, is what, my recollection was that the, the city would provide the first, you know, low-level treatment, and then we would turn that low-level treated water over to you, and then you would treat it further to, to specs. And that was what we were operating on. Is that, is that right?
The, the city would carry on as they always do and, as they, as you do presently, because that's, that's the law.
The way I recollected those in that initial conversation is that was very specifically stated that the testing to get to that level would be on the, the, or, you know, it wouldn't be on the city. Like no, paying to the city.
We would get to level one.
Standard testing, yes.
And then over here was number two, and that was not us.
Do you remember like that, or just like, like a higher level of treatment?
I recall, we treated two, numbers really don't matter. I mean, but we treated, oh, it was a level two, and then they had to treat it to a level three. And if I remember correctly, reasoning was because you were going to disperse it on a course where people would be walking or something, but I.
The, the level you treat to now is, is fine according to the DEQ to use out there. The only, the only additional treatment they would require for us to, to reuse it is, is chlorinating it so it doesn't, so bacteria doesn't grow. Yeah, it's not DEQ, it's Oregon Health Authority.
Yeah, they, they do, which is water parameters anyways. Yeah, but that's, I guess, maybe even if it is just that, it's not going to be the city, was the impression I got calling those samples.
No, 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 you guys, that, that sampling station and that chlorinator would be in our pump station in the little, small garage.
Right. Well, and that's like, when are we going to have the, the more of the conversation about whose pump station that is and how that's going to work and the funding of it that the city got available? Like I, I, it's great that we have this document, but, but how, like the 125 gallons a minute that the city shall provide, like, how do we know that we can do that?
That, that's based upon, and then that's the engineer's number, Aaron Speckman, with the Dyer Partnership, and he looked at your records.
No, and that's what scared me is I was looking at that 65 million, and that's about as much water as we pump. So in the summertime, when people are watering and stuff, we might have a hard time.
Yeah, it's.
It's the language, it's the shell.
That's what kills me, yeah.
Well, it's just every, everything, everything you have except what you need to rinse continually or occasionally rinse your present outfall to keep it viable.
We're going to keep that, we're going to be alternating that outfall.
Correct, and it, and it spells that out in here.
But previously, the head of public works and I agreed that a slow, continuous flow would be how we would want to consider working that instead of periodically, because it doesn't make, take much for it to stack up in a sewer line or a gravity line. So I thought that we had been talking about the consistent flow through that existing outfall as well.
I would defer to an engineer, I would think a short blast would be better than a trickle, but I.
Got you.
Intuitively, but I'm not a.
Have a talk with an engineer, you know, as we start talking about this document, like those number questions are, are big for me before we can, you know, before we shall do anything.
I, I have a question, or I'd like to bring something up, which is, so Troy, this seems to me like, is this a requirement for what you need to do to continue to get your DEQ permit to come up with this?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have, we have like many steps otherwise, right? Like we have, the steps Pat was talking about to figure out, we're not going to be, you know, the actual infrastructure and all that jazz. So it would be really, I think, useful to understand how that sequence of steps is going to come together, because it seems like we keep getting little pieces, but there's many steps. And I know that when we were last dealing with, and then the other thing I would like to say to Mayor Cox is, and my fellow councilors, is since we at this time don't have an attorney, I, I think we can't really put this onto the agenda until we, until we get ourselves an attorney who can, can help us represent us in these situations, so.
And it was too soon anyways, so yeah.
Yeah, but we can, we can look at this and start thinking about it. But that's, that's just the, the situation we're in right now. We're a little low on the capacity that we need to be.
I understand.
Do, do our due diligence.
And I'm not, I'm not here today to tell you how a watch works. I'm here to give you, provide an update. And this is a pretty vanilla document.
This might help some engineers, Dyer Partnership, through the same agreement with the city of Sutherland to take their pool of water to a golf course as well. So that's what this.
This kind of boilerplate off of.
It was cut and paste. In fact, one of the last edits we did, we changed Curry to Douglas because they forgot to change that. So this is, very much resembles the document between the city of Sutherland over by Rosenberg and the golf course there. That golf course has changed names every five years, but.
What's the deadline on this, Troy?
Well, we need to have this for the DEQ to move forward, and we'd like to move forward. It's, the engineers are working on, on the, the design of the pump station and pipeline now. That was partially done, and then COVID and other things happened, so it just, things fell apart. So we'd like to get going on the pump station in the spring, if we can get the DEQ to move that fast, which means everybody before then needs to move urgently, not quickly without hurrying. How's that? And I'm not, we're not trying to, again, we want to be a, a good partner in this public-private partnership, and this is a, a private utility that's going through town. And so it, it needs to be a transparent process, and you guys need to be comfortable with it all, all along, as do we.
Because that's the biggest rub, is when you say private utility, and we're talking about that $750,000 in tax money for recycled water, that's going to be one of the big hitches for me to sign off on any document like this. So that'll be part of the conversation, I guess, next month, too, because it's a big piece of it. And I don't see, until we talk to engineers and have some answers on that, I don't see this being possible to be that, that quick without a couple meetings.
And our engineering firm used to be your engineering firm, and their most recent assessment, I think it, it's a few years old now, but I, I mean, and it's a fairly sizable document, but it, they gave their recommendations what needs to happen at your treatment plant. And you have that document, or if you can, I can certainly supply it back to you. It's the most recent from the Dyer Partnership.
You know, Troy, mentioning that you have in this list of documents, one of them that I don't think I've seen that I'd love to look at, which is, oh gosh, I'm getting mixed up here. Oh, the, the Curry County approved alternative analysis? I don't remember seeing, I, well, I may not have been paying attention, paying attention. Is that something you could share?
Sure, it's, it's, it's essentially the same, nearly identical to the conditional new, the two versions of the pipelines that go through Port Orford. I mean, they, because it goes through the urban growth boundary, they needed to weigh in as well.
Okay, got it, so it's for.
So it's not.
It's basically their part of it.
Correct, it's not, it's not a, it's not a different document.
Okay, got it, okay.
Has different, has some additional pages.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Because it, as it leaves the city, it winds into the county, and so there, the extra pages are documentation dealing with land ownership out of, out in the county.
And that also went to, that also went to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
And that, and that might be worth reading, the Luba decision, because I think there are five assignments of error in the decision, and they were, the referees at Luba were pretty clear in, in their analysis of it. And you could pull that straight off, actually, the Oregon.gov site of Luba decisions. I, I think that one was in 2018. Year by year, you can see all of the Luba decisions. But if, if you'd like a copy, I can get you a copy.
I'm sure I can look it up, thank you.
So what's our timeline on, on attorney?
Low, I mean, would like to say we could pull it off by next month, but I'm not sure.
I agree that we shouldn't be entering into any contracts without, without an attorney's opinion.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, it's not only a contract, we just have to be on our toes as a council, how we act until we get an attorney here that can, you know, keep us in order, so.
And as I was saying, we have, there, there are many different steps along the way, and so that's how the sequence of steps happens. And when you agree to one thing, are you agreeing to another thing? And there's always been, it's just a little unclear to me how all that works.
And, and the things pointed out in this agreement are, are things that have, that have already been agreed to by previous councils. There's really nothing new in here.
Other than the fact that there's $750,000 of tax money on the table that totally changes the conversation, so we have to nail that down before we can.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the major changes.
That's tough for us, that's tough for us. You know, the, my people, my constituents are coming to me and saying, we don't, we don't have any water. And we were just finding our residents for using too many gallons of water to, to bathe their children. And then we have a chunk of nearly a million dollars for treatment for this. So we do need to have a conversation about how the, the optics are terrible, horrible.
I get that completely.
Yeah, so I don't know how we fix that, if fixable.
Well, I, I think maybe a, a next step to help with that, Brett, is, is, is we bring our engineers in, because they're very familiar with the system. And, and we just talk about it in, in probably another work session.
Well, it, it, it would stand to reason that since we shall provide this water, it would stand to reason that we put that $750,000 on our side of it and get water to our people first. Just saying, so, you know, it would stand to reason.
It would stand to reason, but that's not, not how the grant is, is written. But to be able to deliver it, I mean, it has to be a sound enough system. So it, part of the pipeline goes the other, the other direction, too, from our pump station, I would think.
Can you explain that part about.
More of a question for an engineer.
Can you explain that a little bit more, the part about your pump station coming into our water treatment plant? You were just saying that it goes the other direction?
Out to the outfall.
There's, there's a pipeline connecting your current system to our pump station. Our pump station is on our tax lot 1011 on 12th Street, right adjacent to, across the street from Wyoming, essentially. So there has to be a pipe connecting the two, and so you would pump into our wet well, which is this cylinder in the ground with a pump in the bottom, and it pumps it north.
Yes, but I'm talking, you, you keep bringing up that there's going to be the opportunity to go the different direction into our wastewater treatment. So that's what I was asking.
No, no, I, your system has to be sound enough to, to deliver the water.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And, and if it's deficient, if it's not able to pump, then, then that, that's specific language, and I'm no engineer, but if, if, if your pump at the, where it exits your system needs to be replaced, I would think that would qualify as, as part of the dollars or maybe even some other part of the plant. I, but I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I won't.
That's not even an engineer, that's something we're, we're trying to get to the bottom of, is what, what that, there's very specific ways that money can or cannot be spent. So that's something we are trying to get to the bottom of, or I believe.
And Aaron Speckman, the president of the Dyer Partnership, he's a nice young man. They, they work with, with that organization all the time, and they're well-versed in spending these grant dollars, so it would be helpful.
Which organization are you referring to, the Business Oregon?
Business Oregon. And I'm told, told whoever's portfolio your grant is in is, that person is, is actually easy to work with, which is, that's a plus.
Anything else?
Is, do you have a date in mind that you would like to have a work session with an engineer to help you work through this?
Well, I mean, we're, I was just going to have to have that conversation before we can, you know, entertaining.
We have a, we have a lot of other work sessions that we need to do right now.
And I'm not trying to pin you down, I just want to keep that front of mind, though, because we want to keep moving forward.
Right.
We did that extension, or we did, we approved that extension for the, and when does that come up? March, March, April?
April.
April.
What's the deadline for spending the grant money?
There is none, unfortunately, so.
So that, that deadline that.
There was some thought that there might be a two-year deadline, because it, a lot of money that comes from the legislature has a biennium timeline, but this money is from the lottery, so that, that pot of money does not have the two-year deadline.
And it's an appropriation, and that's an important thing, I guess, to throw out there, too, is the, the city didn't expend any dollars or effort or staff time in going after the $750,000. It was a different entity, so there hasn't been any real, well, other than what we're doing here, and some staff time, obviously, but, but the city didn't pursue that $750,000. You know, I think we might have gone a different way, so just.
And the city, I would say, is pursuing a lot of other priorities right now for water supply for the benefit of our community.
When your water update for the regular meeting.
Yeah, I know, we'll save it.
Yeah. So I wish, yeah, I wish we could give you a good timeline on that, but we are trying to get the city admin and attorney and.
We do have so. The, the, or the extension that, that we approved, April, is that what you said, yeah?
Can you get an extension after April?
Well, that was.
Well, we asked the planning commission for one, but yes, we're hoping not to have to go back to the well. No pun intended.
Well, we're, we're definitely diligently working on an attorney and a city manager right now. I mean, we're in the process of it, so.
And that's the number one priority?
Yeah, because we're pretty much crippled without either.
I would like to commit to being able to do it before April, but we, I, I don't think we can. I, I mean.
Pretty, pretty optimistic.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't.
No, I am, but.
By that schedule, we'd be able to, but.
Well, and I understand the timeline, but this is the kind of thing that's, like, we need to move slow on, you know, or definitely measure twice, not slow, but just definitely a lot of moving parts. And so I guess maybe the next thing would be to do is have that workshop with the engineers, or maybe gain a little bit on that, but like you say, we got a couple other.
Our engineers right now are helping us with two other grants and are just like up to the max. And so certainly through January, we're super maxed out with our engineers, I know.
Yeah, so, yeah, February maybe.
Ideally, we would wait and hire our administrator, or at least our attorney, and then be able to get back to you.
Because the attorney should be involved in the workshop and.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
Yeah, the attorney is, is very important, and, you know, obviously you guys understand that, so that's been.
Oh, without question.
Hopefully, we come, come together with something here pretty quick, and, and we're, you know, we're, we're already in the process of the city manager, so we're working on it. So, so February in my mind would be pretty, I mean, that's two weeks out, that'd be wishful.
Yeah, no.
I would think, I'm just.
Well, well, and if it would be helpful, we can schedule a work session.
Oh, and I'm not saying for the work session, I'm just saying for the process to move forward.
Yeah, well, and maybe a work session with, with Aaron Speckman from the Dyer Partnership will help answer some questions for you. And, and they're very familiar with your wastewater treatment plant, having been your engineer, city engineer for a long time.
Yeah, so basically, until we get through our regular meeting, we have a lot of meat on the bone, so we can get back to you, but I don't think we're going to be able to nail down.
No, I, I understand, I don't want you to forget about us, because we want to move, and, but you have.
Yeah, optimistically, maybe a work.
Unusual issues.
February-ish, so.
A work session before the next regular, regularly scheduled council meeting, perhaps?
Perhaps.
How's your funding going, Troy?
It's, it's going pretty well.
Is it?
Yeah. We're working like crazy anyway.
Yeah.
You've seen us from your, your work.
I have, I have.
How's that going for you this year?
Oh, it's, it's been a little bit slow for me. I've been kind of off on some other things. Yeah, there's, there's a few crap around this here a little bit.
Okay, everybody, some more questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
We'll get back to you as soon as possible. Like I say, we'll learn a little bit more about.
We'll be full-on pestering, don't worry.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that. Okay, so. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess I haven't closed the workshop yet, so we, we could talk about this amongst ourselves, but we still, you know, I think we know the questions we have. Like, me and Brett saw that shell. Yeah, when you said when that shell's on the document, it's the first word that sticks out.
A little bit sketchy, and that was.
Especially when it's followed by math.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to be careful that we do it right.
And we can talk about it at the regular meeting, I guess. We can't even really, yeah, we can't do anything that, that'll be in this direction. So I will guess I'll close this workshop and. So I will guess I'll close this workshop and try to drag my feet as much as possible, but it looks like we got about 20 minutes until the next one, so.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're gonna open up this regular session of the City of Port Orford Council at 5:34. Yeah, 5:34, I need glasses. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so we're opening, opened up this meeting for Thursday, January 18th at 5:34. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So roll call, Counselor Tidy, present. Our microphones on?
Present.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitz?
Tim here.
Counselor Rask?
Here.
Counselor Velisis?
Here.
And Counselor.
Chair, Webb present.
All right, gang's all here. Additions to the agenda, we do not have the executive session marked out on here and that's going to be, uh, item 10, 10C, after, after consideration, so people don't have to wait.
We, we have 11, a little 11 and 12 here on page. I don't know if that really matters on.
Right, right. And so it's going to be 10C under consid, like right after the considerations before we do the future meetings and the adjournments. It's going to be ORS 1926602F. Okay, so it's going to be, uh, it's going to be, ORS is 1926602F and it's also going to be 7D.
What's that titled?
Uh, they're both under the 192660 to discuss personnel. Ones with, uh, ones to discuss, um, hiring, uh, executive staff and the other one is to discuss documents that's not public information. And the public information ones, the 7, uh, 7F and the, the other ones are for the hiring of the. 7D for the one, but 72F for the other. We'll reiterate that when we get to it. So any other additions?
We have to add the 30, uh, special meeting on the 30th. Oh, we'll just do the.
We'll just do that first, first meeting, sir. But don't, I mean, write that down right now, so don't forget.
Should we try to schedule a workshop before our schedule gets crazy?
We can, but we'll talk about that at future meetings too, unless, well, no, I mean, it's.
Getting his schedule sort of, you know, puts us.
Yeah, and we might as well do it right now, so we're not doing.
The thing is, we have to, we're gonna, I know we're gonna have to like be scheduling probably other workshops for the hiring thing. So anyway, we're just gonna have a, I anticipate we're gonna have a lot of workshops and, or executive sessions and things or meetings, so anyway, we could do it if you want, but maybe we should wait and do it at the end.
Is there a, um, have we come to an agreement on like a system of interviewing or are we gonna do?
We, we have that agreement, you know, that we, that general outline we agree to, but we'll be discussing later, um, we'll be discussing that later.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so we'll think about the workshop, but we'll, nothing is jumping out. I mean, because I mean, that, I understand that they're in a hurry, but that.
But I'm just thinking if we, if we like schedule something in March, then at least we have a, a date to work around and make it, I'm a date and we have a deadline.
Yeah, then March would be good. I mean, I think we can pull it off by March. So do you want to just, uh, tell them that we'll do a workshop before the March regular meeting?
You know, given the short notice that we've gotten with this project over the years, this is a pretty good notice. You know, I mean, 90 days or whatever is a lot better than like nine minutes.
That's true, it is.
And so I, I would, I would be in favor of scheduling a workshop and then if it doesn't work out, we cancel the workshop.
Well, we have a million questions, so that's one, like, even if we have a workshop, I don't, so does, under that line of thinking, should we push for February instead of March? But I mean, but we have an attorney and we have.
Engineer.
I think we have like so many things that we have to get our ducks in a row on. I mean, we have.
Yeah, even before we have the conversation.
Before, before we have, you know, they want the conversation about that one little thing, but then it's all these other pieces, so I.
Well, and that's the thing in my mind that I might not have been able to convey in the workshop is like, those answers have 100% bearing on, on what we were presented with, so, so there's a lot. So, so everybody good with March?
I am. I think if we say it's going to be a placeholder or, you know, we're gonna do it, but we, we have a lot of ducks to get into a row, I think.
So we'd try to have it before the, our regular March meeting, is that the idea?
I think so.
Yeah.
March meeting workshop pending. Okay. Presentations to council, none. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Uh, it's got the minutes from July 20th, October 19th, December 21st, as well as appointments that have been reviewed by the mayor.
I move that we approve the consent calendar?
I second it.
Any discussion on that? I wasn't gonna ask Brett.
I, I. Oh, my goodness. I have no, I have no discussion, I just, I, I haven't had an opportunity to review these as, as well I norm, as, as I would normally. And so I'm a, I'm a bit.
Maybe, can I ask Joseph, just, it seems like we got a little bit behind on these and that is just because of just the chaos of things and, but normally the goal is to.
One, one per session.
Yeah.
Um, there will be a, next meeting, there'll probably also be a few to review.
Just in case you're catching up, uh, we all know how busy you are and that you've been spent so much. And, and plus July was like a five-hour meeting, right?
Yeah.
And to, to do the minutes for a five-hour meeting takes about 15 hours in my experience.
Well, it, it took the better part of an entire workday.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion on the consent calendar? I'll call for the vote, Counselor Rask, Counselor Tidy?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, no.
And Counselor Velisis?
Yes.
Okay, so citizen concerns, uh, for agenda items, is there anyone with a citizen concern?
Have we, have we, excuse me, have we caught up with last December? Is that, is that what this one is? So, so a few of us weren't here and so a few of us just voted on minutes that they were not, had a meeting of, just throwing it out there, so you know.
Well, but people can.
Saw the video.
I'm just saying, you can still, you can still vote, you can do anything you want. I'm just saying that, uh, I was not here in December of 22.
This is 23.
Yeah, 22, okay, so I was asking about the minutes from 22, December 22. We have a few, we have a few outstanding, I guess that's what I was getting at is that we do have.
Outstanding minutes from December of 22.
That's right, that's right. We have, uh, maybe even January, was it? I'm just saying just for, you know, for housekeeping.
Can you drop that down that we just need to verify that all the minutes have been accepted for.
And, and just, you know, if you have to, you, you probably have to do something about it, but just, I would say be as vague as possible.
Didn't you have to actually complete all the minutes as part of the audit? So shouldn't we have been, had 2022 be all done then? Or?
I just don't recall being completely caught up. Sorry, Penny. Throwing shade, throwing shade on Penny here.
I remember that you brought this up at a previous meeting a few months ago and then I believe at the next meeting I had them.
Okay.
On the agenda, but then you were not present for that meeting, un, unfortunately.
Perfect, all right, thank you, sounds like you're on it.
I'm not 100% sure about that though, so I will make a note to myself to verify that the 2022 minutes, um, we have them.
There was just a few months there, it was goofy, you know, times or whatever.
And they're not on, they're not on the website, so that, that may be part of.
I make sure to get the 2022.
It sounds like you're on it, thank you very much, appreciate that, keeps us out of trouble.
Okay, back to you, Penny.
Penny Cease, 834 Deedee Street. This is, is not out of order, but I understood that we were going to be allowed to speak about the presentation, the ERPD presentation during these comments because we could not do it, uh, at the workshop.
I, it would be under the considerations because it's not on the agenda and, uh, yeah, so this is the concerns for the agenda items and then the considerations would be, um, the spot to talk about it. Did I, because I probably would have been the one to tell you, I mean, I'm probably was the one to say that, that we could talk, but did I say that I would bump it up? Did I say that I would bump it up so that we didn't have to?
I, that's what I understood.
Hmm, put myself in a pickle.
I don't have a problem with it if other.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks guys for letting me have a look on this one. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much, thank you very much. Um, I, it will just be very brief. Uh, I listened to the presentation, I compared it with what I already know about the, the plans, the progress, what the council might have talked about in the past regarding the pipeline. And I, I heard that you are going to be very deliberate in your consideration of what's coming at you from the engineer and from ERPD. I would also like to bring up though, something that wasn't really discussed by them, um, and I haven't heard the council talk about it, but DEQ has its own process for approving this, this recycled water use plan that, uh, will involve hearings and notices and so on. And I'm concerned that if the city were to sign this agreement in advance, that that might derail and, and change DEQ's process. So I think that we almost need to let DEQ play out its own process and approval with, with ERPD. When they finally supply the last information that they need to supply, which we understand, they have not done. They, they simply haven't completed their process with DEQ. And I think that the city needs to realize that they have to stay on top of that aspect of this whole pipeline complex. And if you do that, I think you'll be ahead of the game. Rather than hurrying up to sign this agreement so they can start in the spring, I don't know, that sounds like a bad plan to me. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny.
Okay, anyone else?
I know you didn't want to talk about the water stuff. My name is Roan Stetson, 1895 Washington. Are the citizens going to have their bans lifted on watering their lawns and the fines lifted should that go through with that tax money? For the $750,000? Because right now we have, you had made mention that, uh, people watering their lawns in the evening would affect that water flow, but we're banned from watering our lawns and washing our cars. Car washing, I can understand, but with the Fourth of July and such in town being such a big thing, the lawn watering is a little excessive to not be able to do. And two, I'd also like to state in the last meeting Hank Hobart came up here and put his hand on his gun belt as I was talking and that's an unacceptable act, it's menacing. And you allowed him to do that. So at further meetings, I would appreciate a little more responsible behavior. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we will move on to departmental reports. Uh, Admin, I guess that's me, kind of mostly Ann lately, she's been doing so much on the, the block grant and the BRIT grant, uh, which will be apparent here for the rest of these, uh, reports. I've been, there was a lurch on, from holidays and I've had some other stuff going on, so I'm doubling down on the attorney, uh, search. I just asked Perry if she would support me a little bit on that, so we're gonna double down on that. Because I messed up, I thought that we could, could get somebody as a stopgap, but you know, one of those things of not having an attorney, oh darn, we gotta do the whole process, thank you Brett last month. So that's where we're at with that. We do have, uh, we did get a labor attorney to help us with the, the, the rest of the union negotiations and some other things, so, so we are moving forward with that. And we're just kind of holding the line, waiting for, for some news, for some administrative report, which we will talk more about, uh, in the executive session at the end of the meeting. And we were not able to get a financial report this month because of transitions, transitions as well. So that's a big one, obviously just as important as getting an attorney, so we will pick that back up next month. And with that, I will go to John. Anything on here, stick out, John?
Yeah, let's just, I gave you guys got a copy of it, right?
I don't, oh, yeah.
So you can just see what's interesting here is treated water produced was 55 million, water, water sold was 28 million.
But wait a minute, 55 million for a month?
No, no, this is a year.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
I just did a year in kind of closing out towards the end of the year because I was behind on reporting, so, um, just some bullet points on stuff that was accomplished, stuff that was done, but, um, anyway, so backwash accounted for $2 million, $2 million gallons, which takes us down to about 53 million. Um, we still don't have, uh, trackability on what we're using at the water plant for treated water, so there's probably another million or two there, but we're still running 40% loss. So that equates to about $2 million, $2 million gallons a month, which means the plant would probably run six or eight hours a day and sometimes be off if we were able to capture what we're actually making, that's a huge difference. So monthly average is about two and a half million, we had 43 no-run days, um, December was kind of interesting, we were actually about 10 inches under our normal, um, water for the year. December, we had 17 inches of rain and this month we've already had 13. So we're, we're getting lots of water, um, pump shack at Hubbard's almost flooded out yesterday, we were within a foot of losing the pumps.
Ooh.
We couldn't pull the boards because we had too much pressure against it, we had three out, we couldn't get the last two out because of the water pressure. So luckily we got pretty creative and, uh, used a high lift jack and we were able to retrieve one of them. That brought the water down, but the water was about a foot deep inside the pump shack.
I was gonna say, if it's a foot below the pumps, that make it a foot deep?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was pretty harrowing there for me, I thought we were gonna be getting new pumps and stuff, but we did solve the problem and got it drained down and then we went back online today, which was kind of cool because we had over, I don't know, we were at like 60 NTUs for Trivinity up there yesterday and overnight it cleaned up pretty quickly.
Help us a little bit.
That's what I was wondering.
Well, yeah.
We definitely.
Stuff off the edges that's been drooling in.
Yeah, we definitely cleaned the pond out a little bit. But all the annual stuff was done, all the state reporting was done, there's a report in the back here that'll tell you the performance of the wastewater treatment plant that Crystal created for y'all. It's really just a bunch of numbers, you gotta really know what they mean to read it, but I thought I would include it. And then I included the water accountability of what we sold for the last, um, for the year. That's at the bottom of the page, so nothing, uh, really new, we're just fighting through being shorthanded and all the stuff that's going on and keeping the water on, so, so far, so good.
How much pond does projects come along?
Yeah, it is, we're about, we're getting close, um, and that was something I was supposed to put in here and I forgot to print the email. So Mr. Hurd was up, sorry, last week, we talked about it, he'd really like to keep going and finish the whole cleaning and then bill you the other 100K next fiscal year. And I told him I'd talk with the council and see what they wanted to do to see if we could actually do that or if we need to have the money allocated in the budget prior to committing. But, uh, he is willing to bill us the 95K that we approved for what, for the, um, the amount of gallons that we approved. And then if we want to continue, he would go ahead and finish the pond and then in July 1st or whenever the budget, your new budget cycle starts, then he would bill for the additional. So it's something we can.
Maybe just talk to Deena and have her. Maybe just talk to Deena and have her call the auditors because I, you know what I mean, to see if we can.
It's more efficient for him, it's more efficient for him because he's working up north anyway. He's coming through town and he has empty trucks when he back hauls, so, um, for him, he'd rather just keep going on it. And then I also talked to him about cleaning out the de-camp pond at the city shop. And he will give us, he'll do that for, if we can find him, uh, he had some Pacifics in the email. We gotta find him somewhere to get rid of it, which I think we have a location, but he'll do it for about twenty cents. And, uh, because it's clean dirt, doesn't require any permitting, but he can take it with the same truck, and that thing hasn't been cleaned out for, I don't know how long, but it's about five feet. I think we estimated about, uh, fifteen thousand cubic feet or something like that.
Take it over to the community garden?
We could, but it's liquid goo.
Yeah, but that's good stuff.
And it needs to go somewhere and dry for.
Take it to my garden, then.
We could. We could go to lots of gardens, but, um, it's really good stuff once it dries out, so, um, we just need to, we it'd be nice to at least get half that pond done, so I can do some better estimates and figure out at twenty cents what we would have a cost. I don't, I'll check with Deena, find out what we have left in the water maintenance budget. We might be able to squeeze it in there this year.
Is there, um, is there any advantage to doing it when it's dry instead of wet?
Uh, at the water plant, it really won't matter because we backwash into it every day.
Okay.
So we'll just pump it down, get as much liquid out of it as possible, and then pull the sediment.
Great if they could deposit it someplace where citizens could go and get some for their garden.
We, we would definitely do that if we had somewhere we could put it where it wouldn't run because it's it's liquid goo. I mean, it's just, you, it's hard to describe, but if you poured it on the ground here, you know, five gallons would, yeah, it's milkshake. It'd cover the ground. There's no way to stack it up.
Milkshake that's been sitting in the sun for an hour.
Yeah, once it dries out, though, within a few days of dry weather in June or July, it would be perfect. It'd be really good. It's all organic, so, um, I'll bring that. I'll get with Deena, talk to her about that, and then I'll confer with you, and we'll decide whether we have the money in the budget.
We'll still have to bring it back, but I think even worst case scenario, we could do a supplemental budget before the end of the year to allocate that money for for next year.
Didn't we just, didn't we, didn't we just do one, though?
We did just do one, but it wasn't like a full-on supplement. We we made some changes that we needed to do, actually, to do the pay for the first part of the.
Right.
So.
Okay.
They're easy.
Okay.
Just kidding. I gotta point this out. We produced fifty-five million gallons of treated water. And we lost, you know, so it doesn't all get to the houses. But this document that we received earlier says that we shall provide sixty-five million gallons of effluent, and so that ten million gallons at least is gonna be.
Effluent, though, doesn't, that's no, that's no problem.
That number's gonna have to be.
Well, but with the I and I, though, like in the wintertime, no problem, the summertime.
Glad you brought up I and I. So the highest love, the highest flow numbers we've seen at wastewater plant, been around highest numbers in three years I've been here, three hundred thousand.
What's I and I?
I and I is infiltration into the sewer network to.
Groundwater into the sewer system because of.
So we broke five hundred K the other day.
Woo.
Five hundred K, which has a habit of washing out your plant, but we were able to slow it down and we kept the plant alive, but you, there's no stopping it. I mean, that's how much infiltration. Normally, it's about ninety to a hundred and twenty K to the plant as raw sewer. But when it rained, we picked up an extra four hundred thousand gallons, so it's a lot. And the cost of treating that four hundred thousand gallons is a lot, and the wear and tear on the pumps and everything else. So in the future, we need to think about doing smoke testing and some, there's gotta be a bunch of cross connects with storm drains and roof gutters and stuff like that. So at some point, we need to start smoke testing and trying to figure out where those connections are and what manholes are leaking in really bad and try to tighten some of that up because that's a huge, that's a huge cost to the city to process that stuff.
I haven't seen a whole lot of manholes with crowd around here either.
Me neither.
But I have seen some with.
There's a ton of clay pipe in the sewer system, which is really old, and they, it's, it always leaks a little bit, so just something to think about in the future. We we're concentrating on the water system right now, but don't forget that in the background, our wastewater is is, um, not as bad, but probably close as far as aging of pipes and whatnot, so just.
So is that anything that would fall within the the guidelines of that seven hundred and fifty thousand?
I'd love to know because I could spend that seven fifty tomorrow. If we'd, somebody just tell me where and what, because we've got projects stacked up. I mean, it could go like that. Well, we got a whole list of projects. It's probably two or three million dollars worth of projects that need to be done, and I did listen to part of that other thing, so I guess I won't get off topic, but, uh, there's a lot of important questions to ask those folks before we go into this venue with them, for sure. For sure. Uh, other than that, we're doing, uh, just fine. We've got some, uh, stuff going on. Hopefully, this month, we're looking at, uh, we're gonna do something with our, we rebuilt the chlorine pumps. It's on here, but we're still having some, um, they're all the same type of pump, but the soda pumps are beginning to us a lot of grief, so we're looking at going to a peristolic pump um, that requires, doesn't get air, and you don't have to bleed, and has only has one maintenance part. And so we're thinking about trying to get a quote to switch over and try one of those and see how it works, and then probably move into the future with our pumping equipment, so we're not spending so much time with them. Because when you do, when one of those soda pumps stop pumping, then we lose our flock and we have to dump everything and restart and everything. It costs us a lot of money and time. So we are gonna dig into that and see what the cost is, and that's kind of my next project, really, to get dug into. Other than that, we're just gonna keep doing what we do, make water and keep the other stuff going downhill.
How much do you have to dump, uh, when you have problems with those soda pumps?
Well, it depends on how bad it is. If it's just one or two chambers, it's nineteen thousand gallons. Depends on what, how many chambers we dump, and if we have to dump the tube settlers. And so we were having that discussion today, and it's, you're not dumping, well, you are. You're dumping treated water, but you're not dumping.
Finished water.
Finished water. So, but then you're three or four hours in the hole, refilling everything and bringing everything back up online, and it's a real pain. It it costs you basically four to six hours to get everything back up. So, um, and they just, they quit on their own sometimes because of the, not so much the age. We're seeing a lot of dirt and stuff in this last batch of soda we got, and we think that's what's causing a lot of the problems. And we've switched soda manufacturers twice now because we had the same problem back in June. And then we got a good batch, and we didn't have any problems for three months, and then we got this new batch, and it's dirty and it's flooding the filters and the check balls, and so it's just kind of, I don't know, it's, uh, I reached out to Univar to ask for a solution on, I don't think their, uh, this batch of soda made the spec sheet or the QC guy wasn't there that day because there's a lot of, a lot of fines in it that shouldn't be. But that's kind of where we're at.
Well, thank you, guys, for what you do. Thank your crew.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. With all this rain, I know every time it's raining now that I'm paying more attention, I'm thinking, uh-oh, these guys are down working at the plant in the middle of the night or I'm doing so many things to help make sure that we all have water, so thank you very much.
Yeah, plants ran twenty-four hours several times this month just to get back, caught, caught back up, so.
Okay, everybody read Hank's report?
Oh, Hank, I got my nickel back just one quick second. I forgot. I had this, I had a contractor look at the interpretive walkway because we've had a lot of questions from citizens and stuff.
Yeah.
I got one bid, and I want to circulate it really quick. As you guys can see, the cost, there's two different quotes on there, ones for the stainless steel brackets that last forever, and I think the other ones are ten to fifteen years. Uh, when we did the inspection on, all the brackets underneath that are holding all the supporting hardware are gone. They're just rotted. So it's, it's somewhere between, uh, what, a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand? To seventy-three if you go with the cheaper brackets, and that's the first quote. I'll try to get two more, and then we'll put it on the.
Can I ask a question?
Project list, I guess.
For that dock, like, we have our interpretive walkway, and it's a pond that's like twenty-five, thirty feet across, and there's a dock that sticks out like fourteen feet into it. Why do we need that dock? You can do all your interpretation and your viewing without that dock. Like, you're literally walking ten feet out to be into the middle of the lake, but when we're looking at that kind of money, is it?
You're talking about the wetland walkway?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, when we, when the watershed council is bringing this back up, they propose that as an alternative, like, maybe we could reduce costs by having more like a platform at the edge.
Right, and then maybe put some of the funds into like opening it up all around, and that might help with some, some other things, too. But I don't know. I just had to throw it out there because.
Yeah.
It is a lot of money. I agree.
And I think what we would have to do with that, obviously, is work on getting a grant for it, but that was one of the thoughts they had, is if you you configure it and, you know, that that could be a good thing. There's other issues down there. I don't know what the status is of them now, but that we would, you know, having a big flat platform right there may also not be a good thing, so.
Do a diving board?
Ew.
So, yeah, no, that's, I just had to throw that out there because it, I always have wondered why that dock was there from the time it was there.
I was driving through town a couple of weeks ago, and, um, and there's a big boom, uh, ODOT had in front of Ed's on nineteenth and Highway, and I thought, oh, no, they're putting the sign in because I don't know why I'd never noticed a sign there, but they were actually taking it out.
Yeah.
And so, so fortunately, that did come out.
Also, did you guys all know that we're in charge of the bus stop at Ray's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just found out after three years. Thanks. So we did, so we did. Somebody handed me a contract from two thousand sixteen, but the funny thing is, the contract shows the bus stop at the other end of the parking lot, so I'm like, well, this is not valid. Throw this contract away. It's in the wrong spot.
It was in the other location.
Okay, so there was history.
Ask the insurance company if they would cover that or something. Weren't we gonna ask? That may have just been a detail that fell through the cracks.
I don't know. It was only a couple hundred bucks for the window to.
Oh, good, okay.
Three and a half weeks to get made, but.
Typically, typically, the deductibles play more.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
All right. Anything else, John?
Nope, I'm good.
Where'd Hank go?
He knew you were gonna call him back.
Anybody have any questions for him? Oh, there he is. Gosh, that's pretty impressive. He just appears when you say his name.
Don't say it three times in the mirror.
No, I don't say anything. Uh, any questions for Hank on his report?
No, thank you for, it's good to have them back. Thank you.
Okay, so planning report. We are gonna have Jen Head come up and do a little report on something they've been working on?
Yeah.
And then you can add, obviously, anything, and you were out of the room. I didn't have a chance to ask you as the planning liaison if it was okay if Jen came up and did a report. I figured it'd be.
Are you the planning liaison? Okay.
He's on the departmental report.
Yeah, I thought that, I thought that it was our planning liaison.
Oh, we don't have a planning liaison because you can't, never mind.
Oh, right.
Sorry.
Me since I go to both rings.
Gotcha. Go right ahead.
Okay. Jen Head, fourteen thirty-seven Jackson. I didn't actually come prepared to give a full report on what we've been doing and planning. I'm working on a special project. I know there is a lot going on and that there are lots of budget, budgetary constraints. But we've been working on, um, the traffic calming issue because it's no secret that we have a speeding issue on residential streets. Um, we've had hundreds and hundreds of comments and threads on Facebook and even people coming to meetings, and so it's been on our agenda for several months. Um, my apologies for not getting this to Joseph in time for this meeting, but, um, I'll send him an electronic copy of this, and then I'll give a full presentation at the next meeting. So, um, I I reached out to a company called Traffic Logics. I think was also, sorry, Gary, also um, spoke with them, and, um, they have a variety of traffic calming solutions. From speed humps and speed bumps that are easy to install and take out to driver feedback signs, which is a sign that blinks your speed back to the driver, and they also collect data on, um, speed, minimum, maximum, um, daily average. And, um, and then they also have ticketing driver feedback signs, and I'm not really sure that that's legal in Oregon, but, um.
They just passed it. They just.
It would be so cool.
I believe there was just a change, but anyway.
Yeah, so according to ODOT, the driver feedback signs are the most, um, effective way to calm traffic, especially on streets like Jackson or the Loop where it's just kind of a straight shot, you know, and there are very few um, speed limit signs and very few stop signs, and especially on the Loop where the speed changes from thirty-five to twenty-five. So what I decided to do was, um, Traffic Logic has a box that they call Speed Tracker Plus, and it would help us determine where in town we actually have speeding issues, so, um, I'll pass this out now so you can look at it.
Extra copy, sorry, I have seven.
That's okay.
Oh, Steve, I do have an extra one. Would you like one or?
Okay.
And then maybe you can share with me a pack.
Also, they'll, I'll send these electronically to Joseph. So unfortunately, these, um, the spec sheets don't have prices. The one that I'm looking at is probably gonna be thirty-five hundred dollars. Also, I've spoken to, um, officers RJ and Andrew, and they were both very supportive of this idea of collecting speeding data around town. So thirty-five hundred for the one that I was looking at, which has Bluetooth to collect the data, so one of the officers, for example, or whoever's monitoring, will be able to walk up to the device and just get the data right to their phone, so we could leave the box in one place for several weeks and then move it to another place and then move it to another place, you know, and collect actual data about where speeding is the worst because the driver feedback signs are quite expensive, you know, it's an investment, so we would probably only want to get a few of them. The, um, so the, also, the one that I'm looking at is solar powered, so we wouldn't have to worry about changing batteries. The other, the non Bluetooth option is, um, I think it's like an SD card where we would have to go and take the data, you know, take it, put it in a computer, put it back in the box, which just seems like a lot of trouble to me. So that's basically my spiel. We want to figure out where, um, you know, where traffic calming solutions are needed in town, and, um, I'm hoping that the city will see fit to invest in one of these data collection devices. I think it could be really valuable tool for us to have at the city, and then hopefully consider, um, you know, the next, next level would be probably driver feedback signs. I did get some good feedback from people in Banden and also in Bingen, which is a little town on the fourteen, on the Washington side, um, of the Columbia, and it's been extremely effective for them in reducing speeds, and um, the speeds in Bingen, I think, are also twenty-five, so, and then you see the one in Banden that they installed coming down the hill from Ray's going south has also been really effective in, um, reminding people to slow down, so that's basically it. If you have any questions.
So it was thirty-five hundred for the, the one that you're recommending?
For, yes, the with, oh, and also.
Of the study.
That's the beginning, yeah, and also the one that I wanted to get takes speed in both directions. They have boxes that are unidirectional, but I feel like it's, it's better to get speed going both ways, so all the bells and whistles, speed both ways, Bluetooth and solar.
And how much are the, um, the signs?
The driver feedback signs, they, they are variable. I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it depends on a lot of things. Same deal with the Bluetooth, solar powered, um, the more frills you add, the more expensive they are, but, um, then also there's the ticketing cameras, which are pretty expensive. I was pricing the speed humps, and I think they were about four thousand apiece. But it was an idea that, you know, um, wasn't quite as popular as the, uh, driver feedback signs because emergency vehicles and, you know, we can space them so that emergency vehicles can straddle, you know, but anyway, the feedback signs seem like the way to go. I want to say six thousand off the top of my head, maybe a little more, but, um, I can come back with some solid numbers next month. I'm working with a guy at the company. I can get a quote.
Um, so this sounds like this is being worked on in planning, and have you also been coordinating with, uh, our, uh, law enforcement?
I have just sort of informally spoken to officers RJ and Andrew about it, and I'd be happy to talk to Chief if he has any questions. But they seemed really supportive of the idea of, you know, both driver feedback signs and collecting data with a box. Maybe Officer Andrew will have something else to say about it, but, um.
And also, have you, would you guys also be interested in trying to look for grant funding for some of these things?
Yes, absolutely. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we have, um, Jana Marman. She.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's also working with me. It's been a while since we connected because of the holidays, but she has, I guess her son works at ODOT and maybe even her daughter, and so we're gonna, he said that there's lots of grant money out there for this kind of thing, so.
I think we should maybe get a quote on the ticketing ones, too, like they.
Sure.
Bring in revenue, so.
Sure, I mean, if it's legal, I.
Well, if it's legal and it's not, it's just black and white. You're speeding, you're not speeding.
There was just some change. I sent the article to Hank, but I could send it.
Okay, what RJ said was, his feedback to me was if they had ticketing cameras on Jackson and some of the other streets like the Loop and maybe Idaho and Pinehurst where people are speeding really bad, it would take a lot of the pressure off them to feel like they have to be there, you know, because the highway is obviously the priority and then crime, actual crimes, you know, happening, so.
Twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, basically, a night we have. Yeah, basically. And night, we have the nighttime speeders. There's like a whole different crop of people than the daytime speeders. So that's the, you know, Port Orford becomes like a racetrack at night and it's kinda crummy. Yeah.
Four thirty, five thirty in the morning.
So.
Something to do with mufflers, like you gotta go super fast or something, cause it seems like the cars without mufflers are always the biggest.
They're not going fast.
Yeah. Yeah, I know how Doppler works. What's that?
Great. Thank you for doing.
Oh, you're welcome.
You know, you know, in that area. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's been a big, it's been a thing that I've been kinda working on the community for a long time, but then um there was a, the tipping point was um a thread on, on Facebook where there were hundreds and hundreds of comments and we thought it was just a Jackson street issue and then it became apparent that it was pre, basically in every street issue, you know, any street that's long enough for people to pick up speed. So. Yeah, and where there's a transition, you know, between speed, speed limits, so.
Well, besides Idaho, cause there's a stop sign.
Stop signs on Idaho.
Intersection.
Yeah, and you know, I don't really.
I could go on forty-five or fifty by the time I hit.
I don't really feel like adding more stop signs is the solution on Jackson. No, it's a thing we talked about, but none of the streets really qualify because you need two through streets, you know, and there's only, only Vista at Eighteenth. Um, so none of this other streets really qualify. And there was some misinformation about who owned Jackson Street. And so I called ODOT because somebody told me that the state governed Jackson. That's actually the city that governs Jackson Street. So we do have the latitude to make changes on Jackson.
They also cover uh Coast Guard Hill, the state.
Right, yeah.
Boy, they'd love for us to have that street.
Yeah, they would. They tried to give it to us.
Give it to us.
You know, it's funny, cause we did, we did have a link.
Thanks, but no thanks.
But we could, we.
Remember Jim loved the idea, cause he was gonna use his driveway paves.
We could still coordinate with them to put a driver feedback sign on Coast Guard Hill, even though it's technically not in Port Orford, but I don't think we'd be able to tick it.
So John, is there anything further that like would require coordination with Public Works on street sighting or anything?
I'd just say that you better find some way of securing that.
I know. That's my big, my big concern is that it's gonna get stolen.
Yep.
Um, I mean, if there's this, there's a s- a speed limit sign across the street from our house and we do have cameras now. Um, but I don't know if my cameras would reach, would, it would trigger, cause there's, they're only, they only go twenty feet out, but we could probably come up with something, you know.
I know we talked with, we had extensive conversations with ODOT, putting them up on each end of the town, just like they did in Banden and they were fairly resistant to it because of the cost.
Oh.
You know? Yeah, it was forty grand, wasn't it?
Is that the ones that are on the coast?
Forty-five thousand.
Or is that the trailer?
No, we wanted them just like Banden where they flash at you, telling you, you know, you're going forty or forty-three. They were like, it's forty grand.
You had something you wanted to say?
Something that uh measures, if you're getting an average in the hours, you have a camera there with the machine, you're going to get images. So it makes sense if you install one, have the city install the other, not rely on somebody else, especially if it's Bluetooth, it'll also send images. You can get it sent directly to a law enforcement.
Yeah, I, so this box doesn't, doesn't take pictures, but I believe that they do have driver feedback signs that do take pictures. And they can take pictures in both directions.
I wonder if these could be mounted high enough that, you know, your average person couldn't reach it.
Somebody would need a ladder.
Twelve feet and.
Maybe.
Yes, if somebody wanted to get it bad enough, they'd bring a ladder, but.
Right. If we attached like a two by four or something to the speed limit sign just temporarily to get it.
Of course.
But I, I mean, it has to be at the right height to capture the data, so um we, I can figure out what that height is, you know, what the optimal height is. Yeah.
And I would think this company would have.
Oh.
We tried both. Where I came from, we had the speed bumps and they were absolute nightmare. Um, didn't slow people down.
Right.
They only slowed down for the speed bump and then they raced right back up.
Right, yeah.
Into the signs that flashed your speed on them and they had a little light that would flash a flash, so it looked like it took a picture of it.
Oh, yeah.
Really slowed people down in the housing areas.
I think they do have that feature, actually, the fake, the fake camera flash.
And it, it, they do work.
What else they have is uh there's a, a not, not so. I, I can buy a flash that flashes back at that camera.
Yep.
And you get nothing off my plate, nothing off my face. I'm just saying.
Oh, you're saying there's ways.
Nineteen dollars, I'm just.
Ways to circumvent.
Well, I, I, there always is.
Right. Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect capturing the speed, I don't think necessarily, but maybe capturing a picture of the car once, you know, if we do get the devices.
That's what the goal is, right?
Mm-hmm.
One devices.
Yeah.
So I don't know here uh if they're using that technology, but in Louisiana, they're using technology where the local law enforcement sees uh cameras up high and they've solved lots of crimes with those cameras because it takes a picture of people every time they come through an intersection.
Right, it's like, yeah, the intersection cameras where people.
Logs that information and.
Yep.
Law enforcement needs to.
Yeah.
To look at it.
I mean, I can look deeper into the legality of ticketing cameras, but I think it would be a good source of revenue and I think it would take a lot of pressure off the police force having to be on, you know, worrying about speeding on local streets.
At the end of the day, it might save somebody's life.
It could. Somebody is going to die on Jackson. It's only a matter of time. I mean, we've had pets run over and things like that and my car was totaled in front of my house. My cat was run over, you know, but so far. Um, yeah, if, I've seen some pretty near scary near misses, so.
Thank you so much, Jen.
You're welcome.
Oh, and I wanted to ask one thing about ADUs and when you guys were thinking of.
Oh, yeah. So at the last meeting, we started, we kinda kicked off um talking about uh revising the housing ordinance. It's a several year plan. And so last, at the last meeting, we just went over the timeline and our goals. You know, we have like a, a chart of our goals across um until twenty twenty-five. And um ADUs definitely high up on the list, tiny homes.
And it'll all be like in one shot or?
Um, well, there's gonna be a period where we are ta, where we take um solicit feedback comments from the public and get input and so it's kind of gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long process. Yeah. But ADUs are a big focus. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And there's one more thing on the planning, if it, if it's all right. Um, if you turn to, I believe it's the last page in your packet, uh departmental reports, I believe, page twenty-four. Uh, above um and Velisus's watershed report, there is an email from uh Greg Thielan, the chairman of the Planning Commission. Uh, if I remember its contents correctly, there, he's basically asking if uh the council would like the Planning Commission to review um the CUP, conditional use permit uh conditions for extensions. Um, although if that's not what it says, uh feel free to chime in right now since you're reading.
Twenty-four, that's what it says.
Okay. I'm uh glad I remembered.
Yeah.
Um. Just doing my best.
So is that something um that we can make a decision on now or is that, how would we work that?
I don't know. It's not, it was in the packet.
I don't think we have to make this. I mean, I, I would think we could just by consensus say, yeah, maybe they could, I mean, I think it would be great to have, gather more information about that. I kinda.
Especially in the next month or so before.
Yeah.
The workshop would be really good.
It would be interesting to know. It would just.
Just to get some extra information. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to be the devil's advocate, we did have our attorney look at it a couple of times for the other conditional use permits and there's never anything that Port Orford does that seems to be comparable to other cities, but just, just being the devil's advocate, like I say.
Well, the question has come up, citizens have asked us in the past, like, why don't we change that? Because, you know, would we want to, instead of saying you can just do it indefinitely? That like after five years or after three years, you're gonna have to go back and do something and start over, cause times change, conditions change, blah, 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 and all these things, I believe, are tied to like how much money or how much you put into it is part of it. So it's not like capricious. It's just more like there could be a way to uh put an end to it, you know, and like have a restart. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Brad. I like words.
I think we'd be wise to run that question by an attorney, to be honest with you. Just to make sure we're covered. I mean, it makes.
We can wait, we can wait to do that, but it just seems like it's just asking, gathering information.
I could say another thing about that from planning, I forgot. Can I say something?
Um, I think, I believe Greg looked at the county um CUP ordinance and it did actually have a timeline, limit on it. And did he investigate other ordinances? It seemed like ours had lacked a lot of detail. Um, it's not something that we can change overnight because it's in the zoning code.
Correct.
So it's something that we would be revisiting as we are updating the housing code because, you know, with the grant that we just got. Yeah.
Yeah, for that reason, that's why I suggest an attorney should probably guide us on it, so.
Well, they're just asking if we want them to gather information at this point, correct?
Yeah.
So it seems reasonable.
That sounds like they already are doing it.
Yeah. Sounds like it's more like a heads up that they're gathering information.
I mean.
Yeah.
For some of them. They can gather information. It's just, we wanna be careful, you know, until we have an, I mean, cause it is a, a land use issue. That makes it, you know, more serious than another issue.
Yeah, before we make a change in it, we definitely want.
Correct. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
So do we, wanna have a consensus to, to go ahead and give our blessing on uh planning doing that?
Sure. I guess, yeah, I just might, it, it's one year at a time and then you, you touch base on it, so I guess.
They're gonna look at altering that whole program, which I don't have, you know, I, I mean, that's a, that's something we can do. It, it says here, we're not in line with Curry County, which we, you know, we may or may not wanna be. I don't know what their code is, but um.
We might want a timeline.
We might.
Well, I mean, but that, but, but that makes it unconditional. That's, I mean, that makes it conditional, right? If you say you have a three year time limit on a, on a conditional thing, then that's a condition. Once again, we need an attorney to.
Yeah.
Do the semantics.
That's all I can suggest.
I mean, but yeah, by consensus, I don't think uh there's a problem looking into it.
And getting more information.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't have.
I've gotten, I've had people talk to me and say, you know, that with the conditional use permit for the pipeline, that they feel like changed a lot since that was initially brought up and initially approved. And so something like this gives me the impression that it would, it would be, there'd be limits on how long you could continue to re-up every year because there's possibly changes that have happened.
Right.
Makes sense. But to find out what other people are doing is a good idea. And that's all they're asking.
And that might sway her.
Okay, consensus, is everybody okay with that? Yep.
They're kind of allowed. They're kind of allowed to do what they want.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's under their pretense. Yeah, it's, it's more like how much work do you wanna do before you present it to council and could get, you know?
Well, I mean, it shouldn't take that long to gather facts from other.
No, no.
I read this as kind of a courtesy. Obviously, it sounds like they're already look, they're interested in this topic. It's been a matter that's come up before our community many times. People have said we should do this, we should consider it. We never have, so.
Okay.
Courtesy.
Alrighty, uh so moving on to the mayor's report, you kinda got it in the administration report. Um concentrating on the air and wrapping up all the loose ends. Um so uh we'll go into liaison reports. Counselor Webb, you got anything from the port?
I, you, uh, is, is Port.
Well, let's see, let's, the borrowings were on the eighteenth last month, so we did report that. So that's the, they're working on the engineering for the foundations. Um. Not yet. No, but it was that holiday lunch too. Like they did it on the eighteenth, so they might not have started on it till last week or so. Um. Gosh, there's.
Yes, I'm sure there's a lot going on. I, I haven't been, um.
And actually, I'll, I'll bring the redevelopment report next meeting and that'll be, that, that pointedly lays it down. So, school, now so the rest. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I have no report on school.
Okay, uh Fire District, we are gonna hit that up again, but did.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was gonna say. We're just gonna do the burn to learn tonight, so.
Okay, watershed? We did have a written report.
Yeah, I have a written watershed report, but I also have the water, lots of water stuff that may have been more administrative, but can I plug it in right now?
Absolutely.
Okay, so yeah, I'm spanning into the water part of things, cause the watershed and the water is all it. So um I just wanted to mention that we have been working, I've been working with John and Pat to uh define a better scope for our brick grant. And um we've kinda narrowed it way, way down to a much smaller uh focused project, focused on shovel-ready projects and um some other maybe planning for a few upgrades that we could do later and uh get it down to more like sort of a seven point five million dollar request. Um, so we're working on that. It's a very uh the, the deadline's the, kind of the end of the month, but we might get it extended for another month. Anyway, that's a big, exciting thing. And while we were doing that, we also um, our buddy at CCD said, hey, you guys should apply for another CBDG grant that's focused on water infrastructure. And we decided to pull a, pull a chunk out of our water master plan, which we had had in the initial brick grant, which was for a raw water storage tank that we could do kind of as a one-off and get a community block grant to pay for that. That's a two point five million dollar grant that doesn't require a match. And it has a very short timeline. So um with their help, since we just did the other CBDG grant, we had kinda like all the stuff ready to go from that grant and all the stuff ready to go from the brick grant and we hired CCD was able to put it together and we're still working on trying to get that one in the hopper. And uh that one's pretty exciting because it would give us the opportunity to store raw water. So some of these situations that John has where we don't have a backup of raw water, um we could store raw water when we have a lot of it. And then when we get into these times of stress, we'd have a backup. So it's a, that is sort of the most exciting project um of all. It's real nuts and bolts. It's like what we really need to give ourselves security. Um, so anyway, I'm.
Would that take the um, the DD uh tank into consideration?
It, we are, for this grant, um we don't know exactly where it's gonna go yet. This is a raw water, it should be a new raw water tank. And we.
But I'm wondering about, you know, the DD tank that's on the top.
Part of what's gonna happen with this tank is gonna be planning to evaluate sites, evaluate what the system is. And basically, there's two things that we were balancing. One is looking at the big picture, looking at all the different grants and the idea that this particular grant was this amount of money and it's kinda like a one-off. So if you could pluck one thing out of this constellation of all the things we need and do it, what would it be? And so we plucked this one because we think it could just be a real benefit to our system. So it kinda sidesteps what you're asking, but it also, there'll be a site evaluation that's a part of that.
In the discussions though, the, the existing reservoir, D D Street was too small for a raw water reservoir because we're, we're thinking like a half a million gallon raw water storage tank and that would help with overtime and pumping. It would give them, you know, oh, we got half a million gallons to pump off of or a couple hundred thousand. We don't have to worry about turbidity today, so it'd be huge. And just to circle back on the initial two, like the, the, the uh, the brick grant got narrowed down based on funding we had available in our water capital reserve and the SDC. It's like, not to say that we're not going to business Oregon and trying to get that through a grant or loan, but that we based it off of money that we have so that when we sign that letter that says we can do the match, I could sleep at night, so.
So I think we went from like sort of a pie in the sky proposal, which we did last time, to one that is super practical, really focused on the most important things that we need to help plug our leaks and give us a little bit more uh water storage and really help our community uh have greater water security and maybe fire flows. So I feel really good about those things.
If we could get that raw water storage and ten or twenty percent, ten or even ten percent off of our water loss, that would be huge. Big, big.
So these two things um are, are, are pretty exciting and I would actually love, we've been talking about different presentations. I've been saying this first, I would love to um kinda give a little presentation about just our whole system at some point that, I mean, obviously John and Pat are the experts. But I've also been trying to put together more like a big picture view just for like more like the novices, like the rest of us in our community to understand the like what the needs are, what the real crisis spots are and what the, to help us figure out what the funding opportunities are. Um, so I'd love. Um, so I'd love to share that with you maybe at a future meeting. Um, and then uh, so those are the big water things um, that, that we're working on. And then just a few other updates that might be more on the back end. Um, oh yeah, we still have not signed the final paperwork for buying this land. It is just, some of these things take forever and we're just still waiting for the final paperwork, but we're very close. I keep saying that every month. And um, we also though, did sign um, the contract for the community building block grant. And so um, that one, um, meaning Pat signed it, um, we're, we're waiting for them to get it going. And at that point, we will probably need to enter into an agreement to contract with CCD to help us with that. I know the community group working on the block grant started to meet. We're gonna be, once all this goes, we'll be in kind of a, a two-month um timeline. And um, I just wanted to, I wanted to propose an idea to you guys. Um, I was wondering if we might want to consider, um, and I've asked Perry about it, having um, Counselor Rask be maybe the liaison for this project as we go forward. Because we'll probably need a council liaison with the citizens and with the project. I mean, once we get an administrator, there will be that work, but um, it, it could be a good.
That's a great idea.
Good thing if people uh, like that idea. I think you'd, I mean, Perry, you know, I mean, Perry, of course, has this background in performing arts and that's gonna be our, uh, you know, it's just a great thing you bring, I think.
She's got three years left.
Everybody good?
We can do that by consensus.
Yeah.
We do it by consensus as opposed to appoint, actually, it can be.
There's no official.
Yeah, great, thanks, everybody feel good? Yeah, I, I would, I think that'd be great. And then uh, what was I gonna say? Um, just one other little thing, Pat, uh, let's see, um, oh, yeah, two other little things, just an update about that, uh, that we're very close, I think, to being done with audits.
Yeah.
And so that's.
We should get that presented to us next month.
So that's.
That's for '22.
Yeah, so we're behind, but we're getting caught up, so that's really good. And then on um, I'll just mention on February 7th here in my liaison report, with uh, Oregon DEQ, DEQ people are gonna have a conference here about these watershed communities, what we're doing to protect our water. And you know, we are like their little star that we've taken this step in buying, almost buying our watershed. So um, it's just kind of fun to, to get that larger perspective that in this, this thing, Port Orford is considered a pioneering community, so.
Was it, was there something on dredging?
Oh my gosh, yes, okay. So yeah, the other big thing. So I gotta tell you, a little bit of egg on my face on this. I told you, I reported incorrectly that we got our dredging permit, we did not get our dredging permit. We got the very first step in our dredging permit, which is a 401(c) permit instead of the 404 permit. So that is the permit from DEQ and then we will get a permit from DSL and then we will probably have to get approvals from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and the National Fish, Nymphs, um, the National Fish and Fisheries Marine Service, National, what is it?
Yes.
Marine Fisheries Service um, before we can get that permit. But we're, we're on the path and we.
Three more groups that need.
Yeah. And we still have the opportunity to have help to get a grant to find the funding for that. So I've asked the engineer, as soon as we finish this brick grant, to start helping us come up with the, how, how much is that gonna cost to get the dredging done so we can get a grant for it? And I, I don't know how, John, if you've started to think about this, I don't know what we're gonna do because that, the conditions for that permit are, we gotta like do it in the summer, which is exactly the time when we don't have the water, so.
It's gonna be tough.
We might have to wait till this tank gets installed.
Right, that, that, that may be the case. Um, last time I talked to Civil West, they were gonna develop an RFP so they can get it out on the street because we'll need three bids because it's gonna be expensive. So just to find out who will provide the dredging service. And um, Washington, they're probably gonna come out of Washington or um, yeah, probably out of Washington or, or Southern California somewhere. Um, there's, there's really nobody within that's close that has the capability. Now Dick Heard did say he has an old pontoon dredge that um, next time he's up, we're gonna do a site visit up there and look at the pond and see if he can, see can, he can get it in there. But um, hasn't been used in three or four years, so he'd have to get it in service, but he wants to look and see if he can even get it down there.
Who is that?
Dick Heard, the one doing the homeless pond.
Trade him an old piece of equipment.
I already, I told, I told him I'd give him one.
Or maybe we could talk to him and talk to the port and try to get some sort of intergovernmental agreement going. Because if our dredge pump might work, then maybe we could, you know, we don't have the equipment or the, the boom, the, the, the long boom backhoe to get out there, but that's the only piece. Like you get a crane down there, like a 15-ton mobile crane, and then we could talk to the port.
It's just a different cutter, it would just be a different cutter.
Why though? I mean, it might suck it up without even.
Nah, too many sticks and debris, even Mr. Heard said that on his first visit.
We can't take those out.
Well, we can't, we, we.
No, that won't work anyways, like a couple pieces of seaweed getting that dredge and it binds up a lot faster than you think. So if there's that many sticks, then.
Yeah, the one they're using abandoned right now would work if it was on a barge. It's an excavator, power-driven head, and I watched them work it last week and it was pretty awesome. Just goes on the end of the excavator arm where the bucket goes and they just six-inch dredge and it was pumping.
Well, I gotta check that out.
Impressive, it is, it is impressive. They already done the whole one side of uh, abandoned, now they're in the harbor section right now.
You know, you can, there's a lot of ways to move mud out of a hole.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of ways.
I was like, yeah.
Yeah, just take.
We did one down at the port, I don't know, 25, 30 years ago where they had uh, a pulley over a fixed jetty and they had a cat on the beach and he just rubbed that, it did nothing, I don't know, there's nothing in the bucket when he got there, but it was cool, you know, it was rented, you know, whatever.
There's a picture in the office of an excavator and a scraper sitting in the surf, floating out right there by where the floating dock is now.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, no, it wasn't cool, it's like, oh, they paid for that.
Whoever they rented the excavator, they paid for that.
So who was it that's running this thing that you liked, was it owned by Bannon or did they contract with somebody?
They're caught.
And contracted it all out, I don't, I don't know, I can't, I took a picture of the, of the company's name so I could call them and find out if they have something smaller. It's a little too big for ours, but it's, it's, it's a big dredge. It works good.
So anyway, that's it.
How much do I need to move 12,000?
Yeah.
What do we get?
2,500.
2,500.
2,500 first event and then only 2,000 over the next 10 years, so.
A year or something, isn't it?
No, 2,000 over 10 years.
That's what I thought, that's, that's the way I read it.
Because of the temporary or the incomplete nature of the permitting, or is that gonna be the goal?
No, I think, well, from what I remember, we, they estimated the yardage at 2,500, the first cleaning, the major clean, that's to get us back down to the original profile, which we can't go below the original profile because it's supposedly bent knight lined. We take a chance of popping it. So um, the 2,500 was to get us to the original profile and then maintenance dredging to occur for the next 10 years at a 2,000 yards.
That's what I thought, but then I just realized we haven't dredged for over 10 years, so that math works out perfectly.
Yeah.
If you, if you stay on it every year and get here.
So if it, if it becomes to where we don't get enough, then we'll have to go back and, and ask if we can increase that. Um, it's really not good with the in, in-water work timing though, between July and August. That was just a terrible, or July and October.
Yep.
I think, yeah, that's just a terrible time for us. That's the driest month, so.
But it'll be nice to have that storage tank.
If we had the storage tank, we could, yeah, we could, excuse me, probably make it work.
Is that because it's dirtier for you when it gets down to?
What's that?
Dirtier water, when it gets to the plant, is that what it is?
Oh yeah, yeah, it makes it dirty, takes a day or two to clear up before you can pump again.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, when they shore it up. Well, plus you have no, hardly anything coming into the pond during those months. I mean, just a trickle.
And that's what they're working against, it's not like, oh, we have to pump slower or we, you know, it's like, it's like, we are not pumping when the turbidity is bad. So when it rains, like they can go for, what's the most you went, three to four days without being able to?
Yeah, three and a half days, down to 11 feet.
And that's another merit of some storage is you can.
I like the storage idea, I think that's great, I mean, I said.
No, I feel good about that, that's probably one of those things that's like, okay, I can.
Really be, nice if they could place that tank next to the DD and tie DD in too, so we could use the 200K out of DD plus the million gallon tanker to 750, that would be really awesome. And then there's one thing to think about, it is they were, they are gonna have to be cleaned probably every couple of years. So it's not a lot of money, it's a couple thousand bucks, but dive team will come in and suck the bottom out of it or drain the bottom if they put in valves where we can drain it.
Is there room up on DD for, next to?
It, it would be close, it depends on how close we can get to the, the transmission line runs right off, like six feet off the old tank, the concrete DD tank that's there. So then we have another, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 feet of room, but that lot's for sale. And we talked about buying it, at like 60K or something, and we never did ever finish that.
Still pretty darn hard to get a 100-foot control area around that.
Mm-hmm, it's a, it, if we had the lot that was for sale, yeah, we'd have plenty of room, we'd have room for two tanks, but I don't know.
That's all part of this grant is figuring out some of that, turning that stuff out. So we don't, we're not going in, these are questions that the engineers will help us decide with, with John's input, you know?
And it doesn't necessarily have to be on DD, it could be down at the plant, the ball field. As we discussed, there's another area that we talked about putting it just outside of the ball field in the backside of our fenced area, um, encroaching on that, as long as we can, we can tie it in there and then we wouldn't have to have a pump station, hopefully, hopefully Hubbard would take it to that tank and then we'd be able to take gravity out of the tank to the plant, that would be my goal, so we didn't have two pump stations.
Okay, anything else?
So Ann mentioned that she would like to um, to give a, a presentation on the whole water situation. Isn't that what you said, basically?
Yeah, just to take like a little 10-minute thing to, just to, in, in the, in the spirit of just making sure, um, some of you guys have been on for a really long time and do know it all, but I mean, Perry's new, I've been knowing it. I think a lot of community members could benefit from just getting a brief overview.
Maybe at our next meeting?
Yeah, I think that we should put something out to the community to do that because a lot of people don't know what's going on and would like to.
I, I should mention too that we have a wonderful community volunteer that has um, volunteered to make a poster about our uh, community water system, so I've been working with her on that and she's come up with a rough draft and uh, what uh, I'm working on it with her and then we'll be sharing it with John and Pat before, uh, you know, either sharing it with everybody or getting it out with the idea. Part of this is also the brick grant, we're supposed to be doing community education about our water system and stuff. And so it's um, it's a great opportunity, we should be doing it anyway so people understand. Uh, there's a lot of, you know, when you come to these meetings, you hear a lot about pipes and leaks.
Just parts.
You know, water treatment and sewer and it's all can be a jumble in your head until you maybe see it all.
So is that something we can put on our next agenda perhaps and, and?
Yeah, all you guys have to do is ask me to put something on the agenda, we don't have to have consensus. I mean, it was super, I can't imagine me saying, no, I don't want to do that. And if I did, I have to do is get two other counselors to do it, so yeah, we totally can.
So let's do that, let's put it on the next month.
Awesome.
And really publicize it and be sure people know we're gonna do it. Great.
I mean, if we wanted to go crazy, we could even have a town hall about that and go even more into with all the grants.
I love that stuff, you know? Yeah.
So water update. Okay, anything else, Ann?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Yeah, thank you, Ann.
Okay, Parks, tidy.
Uh, Parks fundraiser, we have uh, Last of the Citrus at Cafe 2.0, so it's $25 for a big box of oranges or grapefruits left, I think we don't have many left, yeah, they're really good. Um, and we're looking forward to this year trying to get some projects done in Parks, that's it.
TLT, Tim.
TLT, we have some applicants here to consider tonight. Um, I'm gonna meet with Susan Russell and the rest of the folks from Main Street. I don't know if I'll get it in tomorrow, but it'll be next week and uh, we want to discuss the 1% advertising and uh, they want to propose something, I think, but we'll wait and see what the meeting entails. Other than that, we need to get started, as soon as we get enough applicants for this TLT, we probably need to get started no later than the end of February, I would guess.
You have a pool, I think you have five, five subcommittee there tonight.
Yeah, because we did just accept those three.
Three.
Three tonight.
In the consent calendar.
Okay, all right, because I was asking about Steve Cordier, he was still on it and.
Oh.
I don't wanna, what I'm saying is if he's still a member, I don't want to override him if he still wants to.
Right, right.
Joseph's gonna check into that hopefully tomorrow and confirm that, okay.
And is there still, should I ask somebody else?
Uh, well, Brett just said he thinks we have five, if we approve these three, we'll have five, so.
And so you have five, they're approved.
Yeah.
They're approved.
So, yeah, we need to see if Steve is still one of them.
Okay, good, I love it when we have concerns about having too many people, that's a great problem to have.
So what is the deadline for grant submissions to TLT?
So I am not certain what the deadline is, but I do know we try to get it done before we approve our budget in, in June, so that's the rush. We used to wait longer, but then it would mess our budget up and then we'd have to have another meeting to approve the grants. We like to get them done before and then it just goes right into the budget, it's just more transparent.
And then the people have the summer, they know that they have the money to.
Okay.
Yeah, and especially the 1%, because Main Street is our advertising committee, so they typically have to buy ads a year in advance, they have to put down payments. So they really need to get their money in full when it's available.
They're the advertising committee for what?
For the city of Port Orford.
You have a Chamber of Commerce.
Oh.
Chamber of Commerce used to do it many years ago and then when they dissolved, Main Street offered to do it and the council agreed to it, drew up an agreement, the ones that have been doing it, so.
Great, so Tim, since we're, you know, since we don't quite have our administrator yet, are, would you be able to do like, sketch out the timeline? Because I mean, I think if we do want to have people have grant applications in, we might have to put out some notices that, what the due date and all that stuff and we might be able to, you know, we might have to, as counselors, pull that off.
Okay.
Stay on track and I, you know.
Yeah, I'll definitely meet with Deena and find out what the schedule was last year and we'll try to meet that schedule and uh, at least get those out so people can apply for them.
Because if they know now, then they might have to start thinking about it.
Yeah, and then uh, we, we might have some things we need to discuss too as a council regarding those funds that are available.
That'd be great.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Main Street.
Um, Main Street um, bought a website, discoverportorford.org and uh, Kim Foster is working on developing that. She's got a really cool um, some really neat drone footage that'll go on it and um, just a whole area and it looks like it's gonna be a really neat website. Uh, they're working on doing some ads for Travel Oregon Guide and Oregon Coast Visitor Guide and Oregon Coast um, in the mile-by-mile. And um, they've been working on a digital campaign for a while. We have a um, Discover Port Orford Facebook page and Instagram page. So they're plugging along on the, the advertising stuff and um, yeah, they're ready to get a little more information about the TLT funds. Good. That's it.
Typically, we struggle as a city to get, get these folks their funds in a timely manner and I think that's been the problem. It's not only this organization, it's also the people that receive grants, you know? Once we approve our budget, the money should become, we, you know, we budgeted for it so it should become available as soon as the budget's approved. But there's been confusion too with some of the groups, they do have to come in and, you know, ask for the money, even though it's appropriated to them, they have to come in and fill out a request for it and sometimes they don't. Then they'll wait a couple months and they'll say, hey, where's my money? Well, you gotta go through the process because there's gotta be accountability.
And then there's a report at the end, right?
And there is a report, uh, and I know Main Street was good about sending in their reports, but we need to look back at last year's TLT, uh, the people that got grants and see if they've turned in their reports because there is verbiage that says if you don't turn in your final report and the work doesn't get done, you're not eligible for a grant in the future, so. We need to be more accountable for this money.
It's tax money, and, and, and I think, doesn't it talk about they have to repay?
Yes.
Refund, give us our money back.
We could go back after them for our money and we, rightfully so, we should.
I think we should, I, it, it.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's taxpayers' money, like.
It's tax money, yeah.
It, it's really not our money, it's, we're just, we're accountable for it.
The stewards of it, it's, uh, I, I say, I'm aware of a couple of projects that didn't get done.
Yes, sir.
And somebody else's project.
Lay one out, I was just wondering if we, if we might come up with a process for, um, maybe in the future, the first meeting of the T L T board is, is to, um, review.
Yeah.
Or two.
Yeah, so instead of their job just being to divvy up the money for next year, that their, their job is really to be in charge of that whole process, not just that piece. That would make sense.
Typically, after money's awarded, it seems that some of the T L T committees aren't getting back to that second meeting to go over the applications and the projects, but also the city manager should be, you know, the last person, and if it doesn't get done, the city manager has to do it, so.
It sounds like you have some really good people coming on the committee, so that will help.
But it would be great to, yeah, have them really understand the whole picture.
And I will explain that, I'll be at the first meeting and I'll help those folks along and explain what they need to do and, and it helps them out, so.
I wanted to just pick up, um, Gary, one thing from what you said about the, the Discover Port Orford website, I just heard from, um, um, Council Rask, the, um, the news that Michelle Duarte had, has died, which I wasn't aware of, sad news, and, um,
Oh, man.
She has been the person who's been doing the Enjoy Port Orford website for many years, which is a, you know, a good resource, I don't know what's gonna happen to it, but I don't know if the Enjoy, if the Discover Port Orford, Enjoy Port Orford website people ever had any connection, but it might be worth passing that information along, it's still up now and there might be resources on it.
What's it called again?
Enjoy Port Orford.
Enjoy Port Orford, and, um, Michelle has been instrumental about advertising our local businesses at no cost to those local businesses, alls they had to do is contact her and give her the information about their business, and, uh,
She did the, our city website too.
Yes.
Did initially, yeah.
Yes, and she also was a member of T L T, I believe, early on, so.
It's a very beautiful website, I mean, it's always been a very beautiful website.
Is it dot com or org?
Dot com. And, um,
And she's, she was a fabulous marketer, so I mean, she knew exactly what she was doing.
Yep.
Just what they did with that, I mean, that speaks for itself.
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's, um, it's sad, sad news, we live in a time with a lot of people in, you know, our community, older.
Alrighty, anything else on, uh, Main Street?
Nope, that's, that's it.
Alright, moving on to emergency management.
Um, we met last month, um, and we didn't have a quorum and we just discussed a few things, and, um, our first official meeting in City Hall will be next week, next Thursday.
Awesome. Okay, and then homelessness, I, I, that's kind of, maybe we could come over at a better time.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything other than, or Gary, are you, who's in charge of advertising that? Your, those meetings that time, the times?
I believe the city.
I'm just, I'm wondering, are we sure that we're getting that meetings advertised to the, to the public for that?
Indicating, yes, so that's good, thank you, Joseph.
Good, good check.
No, it's brand new, it's brand new and that's.
It is a new committee we.
Brand new, we're not as strong administratively as we possibly could be right now.
We're top light. Yeah, hey, is that, is that, are you slaying that thing? Are you talking about me?
The agenda was put on the website today, it'll be put on the doors in our own town tomorrow, um, we just didn't have room on the doors because we had three notices. Question, and, uh, thank you for making sure.
Thanks, Joseph.
Okay.
So homelessness, so everybody probably knows that the City of Grants Pass's case has been accepted by the Supreme Court, so we're kind of all waiting to see what they say. U S Supreme Court, um, to decide on the camping situation. Um, to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing really happening with N two N right now, is that correct?
Yeah, I can, I can, um, update that there is a million update. Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really networked in with neighbor to neighbor, but, um, we were do, kind of doing the ad hoc committee. Um, and we decided to take a break over the holidays because of the weather, there isn't, it's become kind of a non-issue. But once the rain stopped, you know, then we're gonna be dealing with this all over again, so we're gonna reconvene, start meeting again, um, about trying to find a spot, but what we, what we determined was there really is no other great spot. And we looked at a map, um, Joseph helped us print out a map from the County G I S website that had all the, um, um, city-owned properties around town, and we kind of looked at each one and explored whether it would be a good place to tell people to go, cuz we, we were exploring the idea of the exclusionary ordinance, which is not camp here, but you can, you know, you can only be in whatever parameters, and so that was the thing that Kokil was doing that seemed successful. Um, they also have the added layer of the jail where they have people sort of influxing into the community on a daily basis. Um, but we couldn't come up with a spot that seemed like a great spot, we're not done exploring that idea. Um, but we have to have a place to direct people to, you know, uh, or several places. Um, and the best place is the place that's not owned by the city, you know, over on, um, between Aggett Beach and the Twelfth Street boat, boat ramp, kind of in those woods there, um.
I already had.
Yeah.
Addressed that and.
Right, no. So that was the d- determination that we, that there, we didn't really come up with a great alternative yet, but that we're not done exploring options either, we just took a break over the holidays, so.
And depending on how they rule, it may change everything.
So what, I wasn't aware of this, um, what happened?
This happened last week, the Supreme Court accepted.
And who is suing who?
It's the, it's the Grants Pass City, um, camping ordinance that.
City of Grants pass against somebody's.
Yeah, I can't.
Oh, for being forced to come up with a place for people to camp?
Right, oh, that's being reviewed by the.
That is interesting. Okay, well, yeah, I mean, our solution is probably gonna have to be based on whatever the outcome of that case is, but.
New guidelines at least.
Yeah, but I'm gonna, I'll.
Are we doing good right now?
It's better now that, you know, I think that we discovered it was better all around to have them not congregated in one spot.
Yeah.
Everybody seems to be happier, including those folks.
Yeah, we did figure that out, that it, that was not working and wasn't working for Raze, it wasn't working for them.
Right.
Wasn't working for the community, you know, but I just don't know what the better alternative is yet, so we're, I'll get everybody back together. Um, we were able to meet in here and use, get the map up on the screen and was really productive meeting, yeah, it was, I think Perry, you missed the last meeting, but it was myself, uh, Jen Bailey, Officer Andrew, Pat Ross, um, Tony Miller, neighbor to neighbor, right, anybody else? That was it, and Joseph in and out helping, yeah.
Nicely, we're working on it from a different mindset now, in a way, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it was kind of an all-incl- all-inclusive group, you know, people on all sides of the equation, so.
Perfect, that's what we wanted.
I'm curious, um, if, I see Chief is not here, but Andrew, can you offer any information about how often you're asking people to leave lately, how it, from your perspective, how's it going?
Um, so, I guess I'll set, um, it, it's reduced significantly. So at the end there, before the camp got disbanded, we were responding three or four times a day most days, and now it seems like maybe three to five calls a week that are homeless or transient related.
That's good, how, do you think the population has decreased, or they're just less visible?
Some have moved out and gone other places, but for the most part, I'm seeing the same people. They're, they're just, I think, left to their own choices, they choose to be invisible and stay out of people's way. And it seems to be the way it has, so we haven't been getting the complaints like we were.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, anything else on that from anyone? Hearing nothing, uh, we're gonna skip through old business, uh, new business, we'll go ahead and skip through that as well, and then continuing action items, the hiring committee update, that's pretty much gonna be during the executive session.
Yeah, but I think we can give just maybe, yeah, we could do that, and just wait and give it.
Yeah, cuz we're in, I mean, it's nothing really.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I, I want to, we give a, for the public just to say that we, we got our, we, the hiring committee, um, reviewed the applications, we had the, uh, job, uh, posted for a month, and, um, we reviewed the applications, we had some ones that we thought would be pretty good, and so we, um, got a little bit more information, and today at, in the executive session, we're gonna be sharing with you, um, the question of are we gonna move forward with some of the applicants that we have, or do we wanna hold it open uh, further to ensure that we have, um, a pool of qualified applicants?
Do you have an interview today with someone, or you just, you just met the three of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the nature of the discussion about the type officer, we had to do a closed session at behest of C I S, uh, which it wasn't really, we're not a body, we're just a committee, but it was just a closed discussion, and then if we would've came out with a recommendation, we would've.
We're, we're, we are a governing body as a subcommittee, we've dis- we've discovered a number of, like, the details of some of these things, you know, of like, of how to do the process, so anyway, that's, we'll tell you more during the executive session later.
And everybody can be assured we're following the guidelines of our insurer, uh, C I S and our attorneys, so.
And it's a real pain.
Yeah.
Then if you get your ducks in a row and you're close, and then it's like, oh, by the way, you gotta do.
And, and we, you know, we did adopt a process following in early December, we're a little bit behind on the schedule and dates, but generally, you know, that's just, it, that's, we're following it thus far, and, uh, we have in there that we may need to adjust it if need be, and I kind of feel like we had to adjust it a little bit, cuz we're, we're a little behind and, um, holidays and all that stuff, so I think we're generally on track though, but a little slower than we, we, you know, than, it was a very ambitious schedule that I put together when I was back in December, when I was like, okay, before I knew all these details and hoops
Right.
jumps and everything else.
Amazing what can change in a month.
Okay, so that was the hiring committee update, we have, uh, burn to learn update, the, well, I'll kind of pass this over to Gary, but the, the fire board met and came up with this form with Gary's help, luckily. Yeah, so thank you for that, Gary. Um, yeah, so have you had a chance to look at the instructions in the form, um, and Gary, um, I mean, I have a couple things to say, but you wanna go ahead and?
Yeah, I tried to set the permit form up so that it can, the property owner get it, do the top part, then it come to the, um, the fire department, and then city would be the final approval. And, um, and this pretty much gives the, uh, property owner kind of a list of how it goes. Uh, the fire department agreed on the, on a five hundred dollar flat fee, it would go to the fire department, um.
Jerry, we put a, on, where it says, um, property owner will be responsible for informing the neighbors within a two-block radius, should we say like five days prior to the burn or something like this, cuz that does leave it, I mean, they could walk around and knock on the doors right beforehand.
Right, so, what, what do you think? I think that's good.
Two to three days.
Yeah, and it almost should be like door hangers within a two-block radius.
Because it, because it's the weather, that's what we talked, when we went and talked to the fire department about this, it was, a lot of it had to do with the weather that day too. It was zero wind, there was a whole bunch of other things, so it ended up being just sort of perfect, so.
Right.
And that's why, when you looked at this, it was what we had taken into account for too. So are we gonna update the ordinance with this and then adding into it, or is, how is that gonna go? Cuz obviously this is just a, you know, template in a sense.
State laws, right?
Yeah.
Cover a lot of what we're talking about.
And that should, yeah.
That, that all that for this, and, uh, those were discussed in the, the original, at the time that the ordinance was passed, all of, I, I went back and looked, and, and all of the things that we were saying, yeah, but who's this and who's that and who's that, it's all there. And it refers to the state, uh, any state law, so I, I regret I've been busy with some other things, um, but I meant to get that, so I gotta.
You sent me something, you texted me some.
I did, I was trying to, yeah, um, so the state does have, guy, I don't even know that we have to, the, the, we even have, uh, to, to take action, I mean, the state should, based, like, on that particular one.
On that last burn, you mean?
On this last one. Um, state protocols were not fault.
Yeah, but, so one thing, I ended up, you know, after get hearing complaints, I ended up calling the D E Q and asking them about, like, their, their laws for, um, for air quality, and they said that there's an exemption for burn, learn to burns, except for is the hazardous, and, but the rule about hazardous is.
D E Q approval.
No, that's what it is in our code, but they don't require, but, no, they, well, they told me they don't require approval, that it's like a law, but there's not like any approval process, is what they said to me, that it's kind of like, you know, if somebody broke the law by like filling up a building with tires and then lighting it, and they got bust, they could get busted for having broken the law, but D E Q, there's no, they have to get a, they're supposed to get a certificate that they've had this, um,
Asbestos.
Asbestos cert, um.
Which they did, we saw, we saw this off this last burn, we saw all the, the asbestos stuff.
But there's no, like, there's no, like, they get approval, they just have to follow the rules.
It's like you show them that certificate when they come and ask if you have it, that you, it's not that it's.
Okay, so then we require it.
So it would be.
So then that's a problem, but, but it did go into clearly, it, uh, it clearly, uh, placed responsibility on multiple people. Multiple, uh, even, even like a, a renter could even be, a- and then not just one person for one event, it could be like four or five people could be fined for one single event, and so I don't know, we, cuz we were worried, we didn't know who's, you know, who's this and that, but I.
We took the fine out because I couldn't figure out who would be fined, because the fire department's gonna be the one lighting it off.
So he, so, everybody, everybody.
But I mean, so here's the property owner, they go through, you know, say they fill out the form, it all gets approved, and, and the fire department comes and lights it off, and then there's a problem, well, the property owner is, I don't know how they can be liable when they're gone through the process.
Don't you like that fire?
Are you saying that that's covered in the state statutes? So perhaps.
I can find what I sent you.
Yeah. Perhaps the state statute would make that clear.
But the fine is outside of this, cuz it's part of the city ordinance.
But the, the thing is, there's two things, there's like, we kind of wanna encourage good behavior, so that we don't have these flagrant violations or things that are offensive, and then there's also like, what happens if somebody says no, so like, all of this is sort of oriented towards, like, let's make sure people do a good job and are good neighbors, and if somebody does something bad, you know?
Well, if the property owner lights it off, then that should be a definite violation, but I didn't know how to, I mean, that's
Well, I mean, but that's the whole point of this form, right, is to, like, set the precedent that you have all your ducks in a row and that you're not gonna do anything wrong, but it, you are right, though, like, what if they don't have the twenty-four hour notice or some of the post things, like, how do you, like, it, it.
We can add it, you know, I can just, if we, whatever we wanna do, I can add to it, but I just didn't know how that was gonna be.
Why we're chewing on that, there is one thing that's bothering me.
N F P A fourteen oh three.
What?
Provides minimum requirements for conducting live fire training to ensure they are conducted in safe facilities, blah, blah, blah. There's lots and lots of, of, um, regulations that go well beyond us.
What's N F P A?
Uh, National.
National Fire Protection.
Oh, okay.
This is like the, the standards for professional standards, it's not so much like a state law, but it's like their professional conduct.
We should probably, maybe at the end on that last one, if you said something about, and
Okay.
The property owner is subject to state laws and maybe cite the O R S.
Says the following persons are strictly liable for open burning and violation of this rule. Says the following persons are strictly liable for open burning in violation of this rule, which the rule was, I'll give you that number here. Each person who is in ownership, control or custody of real property on which open burning occurs, including any tenant thereof.
Now, this is open burning, but that's not burn to learn.
It's actually included in open burning.
Oh, okay.
So each person who is in ownership, control or custody of the material that is burned and, and, I mean, even a lot, everybody is a ticket. This idea of who do we give the ticket to, everybody. If you're standard, you get a ticket. That's basically what this says. Well, that was, that was one of the, actually, you sent me that one, and then I, I, that was just the interesting one, because there, there are standards and, and they do include notification and, and just all the things that we were troubling ourselves over have been covered. And they will.
Well, so my brother-in-law was, well, with this thing, he said fire departments should be following these standards. That's like what they should be doing. These are national, you know, yeah, he was.
I think that's part of our problem was that the fire chief is the one.
Well, and that's under that line of thinking, Perry, I think that it should say fire board everywhere. It says fire chief and that the contact information should be on the fire board. Because then they come to the board and everybody's aware of it, and it's in the minutes, and it's part of the process. And if it's like, if they're like, oh, well, I don't want to wait for a month, that's their problem. You should be able to plan that within that window. So I personally think it should say board or commission.
Yeah.
I mean, it says no person may cause or allow to be initiated or maintain any open burning that creates a nuisance to the public safety.
Right, so that's the problem. And that's why it was a one burn to learn a year. And we've had more issues than just this one last fire. This is just the last issue we've had. And that's why.
But, but it would, it appeared to me that it was one, one per year per property owner, not for town.
That's not what we intended. I, in fact, when I looked at that ordinance, I saw that there's, there was some omissions. I don't know if there had been an adjustment. I was told that you guys adjusted it a little bit to make the flyer, the yard burning debris a little bigger.
Yeah, we did. That, that was the only change.
That's how we adjusted the current ordinance. And I see that, I specifically wrote in, oh, what do you call it when you have a ceremonial fire? You know, people who, you know, have witches or, or you burn a flag if it's, so that, that language. So I think maybe some point along the line, there was.
I don't think we pulled anything out. I just wonder how it got admitted.
It would just be accidental, I'm sure, but you know, I, I, but Sarah, because I remember Terry called me and she said, we have Ws, they want to burn a flag of this guy, and then is that covered by a ceremonial fire? And I said, I think that's what we intended.
Yeah, yeah.
That or tribal.
So let me ask you this, if, is the ordinance fine and we just need to follow our ordinance and we're being rhetorical? And does this document convolute everything? Because it's clearly.
Can't give a teeth, if we can't give a teeth, it's worthless.
Right.
And if we don't use the teeth that we have, it's worthless.
Right.
So.
And the teeth we have aren't very big when you're like weighing, you know, like I, I would pay that fine all day long versus hauling that stuff away.
I mean, we can, can't we just say that there aren't any burn to learns in city limits?
We could.
Well, then, then we came up against that. We want our fire department to.
I mean, there's all of the urban growth boundaries.
Which, yeah, but I.
Well, they did it anyway. I mean, basically, they were supposed to come to us to get approval. They didn't do it. They could do that again. And we were, we didn't, I don't, did we write, did we get a letter written of violation or not yet? So we, you know, we're not, we're not enforcing it, and we don't think it's going to matter anyway, as it is.
So it needs to be fixed.
I mean, it, it seems like it'd be easier to say there's no burn to learns in the city limits.
But again, Gary, that was something that we struggled with because we wanted them to be trained well. And, and you know, these are our, our friends, our neighbors, and.
Yeah, I agree.
Because a superior officer directs you to break a, a rule, that, that shouldn't, you shouldn't be in a position to, to, that to do you harm in the future because of lack of training. I mean, if this guy says do this, you do that, and now all of a sudden, you, you know, you lose your training. I don't want to see, I don't think we want to see our guys lose training. So the balance was, was that, you know, this pharmacy thing, I'm telling you, man, I mean, this was a big, big deal.
That's why we have.
Dying in the street and stuff, you know? These people were walking out here just like falling over in the streets, so.
Had to leave the area.
It was terrible.
There were embers all over cars in the RV park next door. I mean, it was a mess.
It really was.
And it burned for, I don't know how, I think it burned longer than this last.
Just three, four days or so.
Yeah, it was five days or.
It's crazy. It's toxic, you know, whatever.
Oh, it was toxic.
We were trying to find a balance, you know, and, and, and the council, after that, after that, the council, you know, inspired to my election, it was, they stopped all burning down, everything. You couldn't, nothing.
We could say that until we sorted out, but, or we could.
I'd say you raise the fine to $25,000 and, and be done with it.
That's a real good fix.
To the landowner, $25,000 to the landowner, do it, figure it out, and do your math if it's worth it to you.
Because we're really not the body to regulate a lot of this, other than you can do it in town or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. So could we like create a committee to review the existing ordinance and, and make recommendations and use Gary's stuff? Pardon?
We have an ordinance, why would we just update?
I think we should update our ordinance, because I think if we have two different things, it's going to make it twice as confusing, which, trust me, it's really not that confusing. That's not the problem here. That's not what happened.
Well, I think that, that, what I was saying before is that this process is kind of like designed to give the law-abiding citizen the, the roadmap to do it. And then we all, I think we kind of, the ordinance is where the rubber meets the road. And I mean, I did hear a rumor that the landowner was trying to get information and couldn't get it and all that jazz. And so if there's a real straightforward, so that the landowner knows that there's a process.
So this is designed then to be?
It's clear that ordinance is so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I know. Yeah. All you have to do is look it up. Yeah, it says you have to come to city council and get approval.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, I think we should clarify, maybe a bigger fine. Maybe that's just the, the ticket.
I think when we had the last discussion and Shayla was here, we, we basically kind of, we kind of need help from a lawyer. Because a lot of times when you add fines, like from so far, like in my bazillions of years of trying to figure out how to enforce the lighting ordinance, you know, you can't just say, oh, let's put a $10,000 fine on it. They have to be like, you know, with, in line with, you know, reason and.
This is a health and safety issue.
Yeah.
Well, so.
This is, this is a serious issue.
Yeah.
Somebody could sue the city of Port Orford because we went, even though, even though we didn't approve it, we're still involved in the process. Somebody, what they do is they just, they sue the guy, they sue the fire department, they sue us because we hire the fire department, just like Brett said.
Well, what, well, what I'm saying is, we need to have legal advice on what to do. We, I think we're clear. We know, we want to tighten it down. We want to add the fine. And we need to have somebody look at it, and we don't have that person right now. I mean, we can, I think we're pretty clear on what we want to do from.
The question is, is how do you properly assess a fine? Is that what?
Like what, what fine would be, I mean, this is my novice take, that it has to be in alignment with, you know, other things. You can't just say, oh, let's do a $10,000 fine.
It's $6,200 to throw garbage out on the side of the road, and garbage on the side of the road isn't going to kill anybody. But this is, this has a potential, a fire has a potential of hurting somebody, catching somebody else's house on fire, making somebody sick from smoke, asbestos if it's not removed.
But it's, but it's, it has to do with the, um, like what the leg, how the legislature, it's like ORS for different types of violations. So it's, it's, I'm just saying, we can't make it up out of our, I don't think we can. Maybe.
I think, I think when we do find out from an attorney, we should go to a max fine.
Yeah.
Like, like Brett's suggesting, because that'll clean up a lot of it. Because it's easy to ignore an ordinance, but if you put enough dollars to it, especially a health and safety issue.
Absolutely.
And something you just said stuck with me of, they're required to come to the council and get approval. So that makes me wonder if we need to have a form between the city and the fire department relinquishing our liability, because that's the big objective, and it might cut out a lot of the footwork of they come to the council like they're supposed to do per ordinance, and then we get the sign off from the fire, and it takes one party out of it. And that, but I just thought of it, I'm just.
And that's what Shayla advised us, is that the fire department should handle this. The fire board should be handling this, not us. But, you know, because Gary has pointed out that we don't think that maybe they will, that we have the duty to protect our citizens, but we also have to make sure we, we don't take on liability.
Yeah, he was.
Oh, they approved this.
David, the fire board approved what, what we put forward. They liked what we had, you know what I mean?
And they figured that, uh, David, the chief would have this form in his office. They would come to him, he'd give him the form.
And I guess in a perfect world, the council would have seen it first, just so we didn't, you know, just so you didn't have to go back with the correction.
The fire chief's also said that he's turned down four properties here in town because they're not proper for burn to learns. He's, he's had people that he's, other properties that have come to him, he's turned down. So, I mean.
God, recently, he told me that's, uh, 15, number 15 Hamlet. I don't know how they went to Langloy Fire. So they went to Langloy Fire and they were going to come in and do a burn to learn. So, I mean.
It's just.
I said, David.
So there's two issues here. There's the ordinance and there's this. And so we all agree that the ordinance needs to be reviewed, but we need our attorney to review it, correct?
Well, the, the attorney's reviewed the ordinance. I mean, the existing ordinance is.
But I think we need to look at it again.
Right.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, I know the existing one's legal.
And.
And, yeah, and to have the attorney review the fine amount as well.
And review this document as well, because there are, you pointed out a couple of things that you saw that was wrong with it.
Right.
So there's at least a couple of things that need to be straightened out on this. It's really not bad, but.
No, but it's just, it's kind of vague.
Well, the two block radius, you tell them the night before, doesn't give them a chance to leave for a couple of days if they're, you know.
That's two blocks. I mean, that's really not very.
No, that's another, and that we should do like the two block radius of door hangers, but a public notice, just like we notice for meetings, you know, post office, city hall, everywhere. Because, because I ran from, no, it was two blocks, I guess, at the last one.
So do we want to kick this back to Gary then for?
I don't know, like, we don't want to like go back and forth. So now I'm wondering if we do need to dig into the ordinance a little bit and compare it with this and then go back with more.
I think we need to wait until we have a legal counsel, because I don't think we can make, I don't think we can make headway on it. We have to have legal counsel advise us on the liability and some other things, so. I would, I think we just have to put a pin in it and say we want to do it.
So can we put this on, should we put this on continuing action items?
Yeah.
Or should we put it on a, when we get an attorney list?
Uh, same difference. I think we can add it to continuing, just to keep a placeholder on it.
Can you do that, Joseph, for us? Add that to continuing action? Thank you, sir.
Gary, would it be okay if I emailed you some suggestions? Thanks.
Yeah, I think we'll have a chance to come back to it before you have to go back to them, because I don't want you to have to come back four times for semantics. Yeah, maybe we just tell them like, hey, let's make sure that we contact the city to the ordinance we have right now, because there was a little bit of an issue, but we're still working on this.
Because when asbestos is removed, isn't there a certificate?
Yeah, that's what I would say. Let's require that we see that certificate, not just, yeah.
Well, that says, have David sign off?
No, no, that's what, one of the suggestions is like the fire board, like it should go in front of the fire board and.
The certificate has to be done by somebody who has like the special credential to, you know, remove it.
Hey, Pat, can I call in here in a minute? I got a thing I got to go, I got something going on all of a sudden here.
Yeah. You might miss council considerations.
That would be fabulous.
Nah, we already made it through liaison reports, the rest of it's.
No, I got.
Okay, so we got a plan moving forward with that. Thank you for doing what you did. I mean, it moved the ball forward, and it's just the nature.
And it sounds like it also had a really good dialogue, you know, I mean, you went there and helped them understand that this is not something we.
I think they understand, and, and they felt like this would hold to whoever to account.
Yep.
So that seemed important to them, too. It was, it was kind of out of their hands. It sounded like he was a pretty important member of the.
Oh, for sure. Well, if somebody's doing something wrong, I don't care who they are, but, I mean, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
That's, I, I don't think, yeah, that's not our intention. Our intention is to keep citizens safe. And we've had complaints now, I remember this one quite well, and, and I remember we've had valid complaints on this last one. So, you know, these are our citizens, and gosh, I'd hate to live next door. I mean, we did. I did, some guy burned a mattress and a bunch of trash next to me one year. And, you know, I had no recourse, because I went over there, it was unattended, burning under the trees, and I thought the whole place was going to go up, and I had to call 911 and get the police there, and then the fire showed up and.
I remember you were real restrained when we did, when we did the fire ordinance, but you had a lot of reasons to not be restrained.
Yeah.
I remember that. Yeah, it's, it's a good thing. I think it's a good thing. I have to, Pat, can I call? Okay. I have to, I'm going to call. I have to go.
But, and, but for the executive session, no.
I don't know what to do here. I gotta, I gotta go, it's.
You gotta go?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Yeah, it's on there. Okay. Now we're going to move into considerations, uh, citizen considerations.
Yeah.
I need a motion to continue the meeting.
I'd motion that we continue the meeting.
A second.
All right, call for the vote. Greg?
No.
Gary?
Yes.
Tim?
Tim, yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Sorry, Greg, usually you would have had a little bit more backup, but I just left.
We didn't have the executive session. I would have done it.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, if it wasn't for executive session, we'd be, we'd be pretty much done anyways, but, uh. Okay, so we are going to move on to citizen considerations. We have Ron on the list.
And Jen Bailey.
Yeah, anyone online?
Jen Bailey.
Yeah, Jen Bailey.
Go ahead, Jen.
Uh, no, Ron's first. Sorry, should, should I go?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, so it's Jen Bailey, 418 16th Street. So I watch all of your meetings. I watch all of the commission meetings, and I just had a couple of requests for these city council meetings. It would be really great if you could include the public works report and the police report in the written minutes. I think that's pretty conventional to do that, and that would really be helpful, just like you have the finance report in the minutes. And then now that the emergency response commission is up and running, I hope that it can be recorded and broadcast the same way as the planning and the parks commission meetings are. That would be helpful, too, as a citizen. Uh, I also wanted to thank Ann Felaces for everything she's been doing. It's been great. And I just wanted to switch gears here and put on my Port Orford Jubilee hat for a moment about the TLT. Conventionally, the grant deadline for the TLT has been in February, so that's really coming up fast. But I did want to remind you all now that the Jubilee is no longer going to be going through the TLT grant process. You all decided last year that, that Jubilee is now a line item in the city budget. So we won't be part of the TLT anymore, and I just wanted to remind you all of that. And Tim, we did get the 2023 final report in, so that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Was, yeah, for this, this, this fiscal year, yes.
Yeah, it was for this fiscal year.
Yeah, it won't be a line item from now on, just for this next fiscal year. Okay, got, got it. All right, thank you for that clarification.
And, yeah, because that was, you had, you guys were coming out of COVID, and I think everybody felt like they really wanted to help.
I thought that we did, the five, like, I thought that we did allocate 5,000 to a line item, but then the extra, like, because they came back and asked for five, which, you know, was granted, but.
It's fifteen in the budget, but I think just.
For this year, for this year.
Of the T L T fund.
And that's what I mean, but I I have this, in the back of my head, I thought that we did do five thousand on the line item yearly because of the extra money that we have coming in that we didn't anticipate. I'm not sure that.
I don't know if we did a a line item on it, but I know we did guarantee that organization five thousand.
For this year.
Yeah, and the only reason we did the the ten, the additional, is because we were coming out of COVID and they were having a rough time transitioning. But yeah, it looks like they're most likely gonna have to fundraise and those kinds of things.
I I think it's just a heads up.
Can I clarify one thing? Um, so for twenty twenty-three, the money was split between the T L T grant and or for and uh city funds.
It was, yeah. It it definitely was because we didn't have uh the additional T L T funds to help you folks out, so we had to find it in the budget, which with current budgetary constraints, we may or may not be able to do that in the future.
I I completely understand it. I appreciate that. We just are gonna need clarification that for this coming year, my understanding is that it's a line item in the budget and that'll be discussed during the budget, and then in the future, it may go back to being T L T, I don't know, but.
Correct.
Well, I think we didn't want it to be competing with the other T L T grants, and that's why we did the five thousand.
Well, years ago, we agreed.
It wasn't five thousand, it.
You look back in the minutes and find out.
Seventy-five and ten.
Years ago, in the, we we changed it so that group before this current group has it, would get five thousand per year, so they didn't. So they could put their down payment on the fireworks, which you have to do the year prior. And then the rest of it, that other group would fundraise for, but fireworks went up all of a sudden and COVID and those kinds of things, and that's why we decided to.
Because they were asking with the T L T grants.
It was money from the T L T grants, and so was half of this money, the five, five grand was.
So because this is got a timeline on it, and it is like we're in consideration, so we've just put this on the agenda for next month right now, so we can hammer out this conversation. Get a little bit more uh information on the minutes of the T L T, of the, of the if it's a line item or not and how we lay that out.
And how, so they could plan.
Right.
I'm sorry, you guys, I did not intend this to to get into this discussion right now, but if you could give us until March, the March meeting and put it on the agenda for then, we'll be.
We can review our minutes.
No, we're just talking about our side of the street and the process.
We just need to review our minutes and give them what we budgeted for.
Yeah, and I think another.
I I was just talking about next year, not this year.
You mean twenty twenty?
Yeah, there's a, I'm sorry, I was not trying to raise an issue about the Jubilee. I was just trying to remind you that for this coming year, it's a line item. So yes, it does need to be clarified, apparently, for next year. No.
Okay, but it's not a huge time. It's something we gotta keep on.
This is not, I did not mean to raise, this is an urgent issue. I apologize, and I'll be emailing you my understanding of all of this, just to catch up.
It'll be a budget conversation too.
Yes.
Yearly, so, okay, cool.
Another part of it would be to understand what, you know, how much, if, how much the T L T fund has that could go into it, you know?
Right.
Well, it's what we allocate, it's, yeah. It's the same kind of thing we went through last year.
Right, and you.
But we, we have a better understanding of our budget this year than we did last year.
Right, and it's something the T L T could talk about a little bit too, if they wanted, or you know what I mean, or just to shake the trees a little bit. So is there anyone else online with a citizen consideration? Man, I gotta cut my hair. I'm hearing none. All right, councillor considerations?
You need to cut your hair.
Great. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, we did that before the online. Sorry, you missed it, but come right up.
I enjoy your meetings and I appreciate all of you. I'm Brett Cecil, four two seven six four Port Orford Loop Road. I enjoy all your meetings. I appreciate all that you guys do here. I know this is all voluntary. Um, but the past couple of meetings, I've kind of twisted myself into fits, and I forget once we get past the meeting. The city's calendar shows this as a regular meeting. It didn't have anything about the workshop on it before this meeting, and there's no agenda posted, and there's no link to watch the show virtually unless you get the agenda. So the past couple of meetings, I haven't been able to tune in, because I don't have a way to do it, so I marched my little behind over here today to let you know.
It could be, um, thank you for letting us know, Brett, that the the post is often like the workshop was not posted until fairly later than we would have liked to, I think.
And I can't find how I got to the Google Calendar for the city of Port Orford, but I have it on here.
But the the current, I find this a little bit confusing. If you go to where all the meetings are, sometimes it's not there, it's in the banner in the top, where it's where the current things are, like, so if you click on the banner, it brings up the link to the meeting. I don't know if the workshop got on there, Joseph, but I don't know if that would.
I believe that it's all on the public notices page, and there's three ways to get to it, from the main page, the banner up top, the bubble that says public notices, or the banner at the bottom that says click here for more important information.
Yeah, I went to the city council page, and at the bottom it says city council meeting page. Click here to view meeting dates and download agendas and et cetera. There's no twenty twenty-four box yet.
Right.
There's a box with twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, all the way back to twenty nineteen, but and in that box is where I usually find the agenda. And that's where it had, that's where it sent me. It directed me to this page to find the agendas for tonight's meeting. And I used to be on the distribution list until our last administrator departed. And I don't know who to contact to be on the distribution list for that, because I used to be dependent on, thank you Dana Gurney, for one hundred friends of Port Orford. So I was told, well, just go out onto Facebook and you can find it, but I don't think that I should have to search Facebook.
It's, well, it's on, there may be, since we've redone our website, I guess what I'm saying is that it has been posted on these places where Joseph is posting them, and then he puts it onto the other place, so it's a little bit of a difference than the way it used to be. So, but it could be a good thing to.
I just found it confusing when I went
Yes.
to city council and read through the whole page. At the very bottom, it says click here to view the meeting dates, and when I do, it's only twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. Good, good thing.
So just maybe a little continuity on that for the future, because I don't always get to be here, but I do like to listen. I don't always get to listen, and I know some people that will listen for me if I can, so I would appreciate that in the future. And I know administratively, there's a lot going on, so, thanks, Joseph.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Good thing.
Yeah. I just wanted to say real quick, it is posted on that top banner um that Ann was describing. And it's the the confusion, I think, is before city council meeting, one eighteen of twenty-four, it has the word planning, so it's kind of confusing.
Yes.
But it is there.
Gotcha. But thank you for bringing it to our attention, and it's a mechanical fix. I like mechanical.
So and and if I may, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any agendas out here either. I thought I'd come into the meeting just to grab an agenda and sit for the meeting.
Oh, as far as printed out, yeah. We can do that.
Yeah.
Just, just another little. Just agendas, not the whole package.
Oh.
Just agendas there so people can follow along.
Okay.
Yeah, no, ten or fifteen packets could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that would be.
All right, is there any more citizen considerations? Councillor considerations, Greg?
At the parks meeting, we discussed uh the line item for the community building. Uh, the line item, there was forty-four thousand dollars put in this this budget this year for the new roof. And we also got that new grant for one point five million dollars for a new community building. So the consensus of the Parks Commission was to bring it up at the council, see if we could do a supplemental line budget item to move uh the forty-four thousand dollars over to Buffington Park to redo the bathrooms. The old bathrooms that are near the mini golf course need to be completely redone. Um, there's no drinking fountain in our, in our park, so we're just trying to, the Parks Department is trying to use, utilize that money um and get some stuff done this year. So for next, you know, for the next meeting, we'd like to see if we could move uh that line item to, from community building to Buffington Park, just so we can utilize those funds in our park this year and get some projects done.
So you're asking that to be on the agenda next time?
Yeah, that was consensus from the parks for me to bring it up to see if we could get that, you know.
And one thing I would say to that is I think we have to, um, well, you know, we were, Tim and I were talking about this in December in our work on the hiring committee, we kind of came to realize we have to do some serious work in our budget, so I feel like we have to get a workshop on that, but now we don't have a finance person, but we need to, we're kind of having like a bunch of things we've got to do, and I know that that David had said that he, David Johnson, when I asked him about that, that there was already some money budgeted for some of those tasks. You don't think there is? That's what I'm trying to do.
Items for.
Not for Buffington Park.
Not for Buffington Park, nothing like that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So hit me up on that again next month, because there is more of a conversation to it, but that starts the conversation, so.
I would like to see um the issue of the mess on Jackson Street back on our agenda. I forget what people called it, the crab lot?
Crab yard.
Yeah, crab yard. Um, I think um that it's really, really offensive to a lot of people that live there, and I think that it's unhealthy, and I think we need to do something about it.
What's the address on this? Do we know?
Seems like Robinson. Probably the same.
Yeah, now it's, now it's.
During the rain, it's getting a little hard to see if it comes down Jackson too. At night time, there's trailers, everything else there that is in the middle of the road.
In the right of way.
Yep.
Yeah.
And cars are passing right there. It's pretty edgy.
Are there specific, like, via code violations that are?
Oh, lots of them.
So there's a list of them that are.
Enforceable with.
There's no electricity, no sewage.
So obviously, we're a little shorthanded, but I I mean, I could start working on a letter just with the stuff that's just to notify the people that all these are in violation and causing community concern, so if you could maybe take some action before we have to, you know, start, I mean, I I always am a fan of sending a letter and see if people comply, because then it makes you feel better on the other side of it, when you do have to penalize it, it's.
Yeah, and and that's all I'm saying is I don't want to see it drop off our radar. I think that it's, it's too important. Did he? I know he visited.
Yeah.
You know, I know that, and that's how we knew that it was as bad as it was.
Did he send a letter yet, or did he?
Last I talked to him, he was, he was sending a letter.
I don't think he did.
What are we talking about? Oh. Oh, and I know there was a conversation, but I don't know if the actual, yeah, but then it seems to blown up after that, so I I'll I'll make sure that that uh that that it's uh. Well, that's why I had Joseph write it down. So they thought someone reminded me about it. Texting myself was just not effective as it used to be for some reason. Uh, any more councillor considerations? Gary?
Um, we had talked about a bulletin board at Ray's a while back.
Yeah, and I, we okayed that, I thought.
Well, we did, but we didn't have the money, and uh, because it's around eight hundred dollars to get one. And so I was just gonna go ahead and do it. I wanted to make sure that it was cool with the council to to do that, and then I'll go back to Terry and make sure before I order it. And then I'm wondering if we could have uh Public Works install it.
You're writing this with your own personal money? I would rather not touch that ever, because of who knows what's in the walls.
It's a block wall.
Yeah, I know, but there's still plumbing and wiring and stuff like that. What if we damage something? I mean, yeah, it's pretty easy to drill a couple of holes and set some.
Redheads.
Anchors and what happened. I just, I went over there and looked at it, and I'm like, eh, what's in the walls? I mean.
I'm sure we could get the contractor to do it though.
I mean, it wouldn't take us long at all. I just, if you hit something, then that could turn into a kind of, well, that helps. If Terry thinks that it's in a good spot and there's nothing there.
Would the post office let us hang anything on there?
What type?
Would the post office let us hang anything on there? Like on the outside when you're going in?
Maybe.
Well, you have, they already have their, um, you can already.
Inside one, I know, but. Little race, I was inside too.
Instead of on the wall, could you put on posts?
At library, at Ray's. It just seemed like Ray's was one of the most traveled.
For sure. I I, and that's like, once again, it's a mechanical problem. I think we can get around that. It's not like a world stopping problem. I think, can we, like, can you do a GoFundMe or something, though? I hate to have you spring that, or you know what I mean?
Well, to me, it's important.
No, I know, I know.
So I'm willing, and um, but I I don't have the wherewithal to hang it.
Well, that is a valid concern John has, because I personally have done that at another business, stepped up and had water lines and water shooting right out of my face. Maybe call a plumber in, knock a hole out of the wall, and solder it up. It was back in my old days. Yeah. That's kind of funny when water starts shooting out your face and you put your thumb there.
And you're the one that's gonna have to fix it too.
Yeah, my company kind of chuckled when I told them about it, but they weren't happy about it, but it's part of doing business.
I don't think anything ethically wrong, unless you try to leverage the council, that that's my sign and I'm hanging what I want in there. Like, that's the only thing I can think of.
Terry, the uh management was saying that it'd be fine if half of the bulletin board could be for Ray's. So I thought, well, it's still the size, it would be around four by four, so it'd be a two foot by four foot spot for a city.
So would there be like an agreement that we would have with Ray's, like there would be a little key and that we could put things in and they could put things in, so that would have to be, but they would own it or we would own it? Kind of be better if they owned it, because it's on their building.
I wonder if they could apply.
Use T L T funding? That seems like a total legit T L T funding project.
And it's not a, you know, four thousand dollar project.
So, but it's still like under that line of thinking, then you really don't want Ray's to have half of it, because it's a community thing, but it's also, it may be if they they applied for it, they could though. And they could use that as part of their application, is we will, you know, leave half of this available to the city, and if if Ray's would be interested in that, and if they want half the sign, they might be, and if we help them do the application, it might save you.
I'm not sure if he's motivated enough to to take the time to do that.
And they're not nonprofits, so they can't apply for T L T.
Yeah, they can.
Typically, a business would have to apply and catch cash match. It's the same thing we run and do with their landscape last year.
Right.
And that's the way the code's written.
But I'm just saying that is a path forward is that could be set up to where they come with a application to T L T that say, put this sign up there for their business, and part, the caveat to it is the city can use half of it. It it documents everything, might save you at least four hundred bucks. Um, and the timeline, I know it's not as fast as you want, but just throwing it out there.
I mean, I can give it a shot. I don't think there's nearly as many people.
Well, no, maybe more and more.
Just for the investment.
But with the lighting there, it'd be visible to.
Twenty-four.
Okay, so uh, if you want to try that, you can, and I don't think that there's a problem with you buying it, but it would almost be like it was yours and Ray's, and you would put city stuff in there, or it would be available. I don't know, yeah.
Taking a donation to the city, but the question I have is who would own it, then who would maintain it? The glass gets broken, who's responsible? You know, those sorts of things seem like they need to get worked out, and um, you know, we just know we have, I'm just raised it because of vandalism and things like that, but it it would be a great thing, because you know, like you were saying, T L T, some of these events that go on, people could put them there, visitors would come and they could know. As well as residents.
Yeah, now it's like, well, maybe blow this up a little bit if you're paying a T L T, like. Okay, so, any other councillor considerations? Okay, sweet. Uh, I don't have any considerations, I don't think. Um, so with. So with that, I think we're going to move into executive session, so if I could get a motion to move into executive session under O R S one nine two six six zero to F and.
Seven D.
Seven two.
And seven two.
Seven D.
Seven D.
It's actually seven D D.
Okay, so if I could get some.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, thank you all. So I'll call for the question, Gary?
Yes.
Since it's the executive session, can we just at least add the number to that?
What?
So moved.
Oh, got, gotcha. Oh, and we did, so.
Somebody said the number?
Yes, I did say the number, and, no, but the motion, well, I was like, I'm, I asked for a motion to move to executive session under O R S. No, I know, it's, it's, your eyes are crossed, you see, it's that situation, for sure. So with that, how would you consider to vote? How would you vote?
Yeah, you're.
On that question?
I'll vote yeah.
Perry?
Yes.
Andrew Lawson.
Yes.
And Greg did ask you to move into executive session? Okay, okay, so we are going to open up executive session at. Yeah, you can say.
All right. We're going, let me get everyone kicked out.
Get out of here.
Thanks, it's time.
I don't even know why you stay past your report. Your salary, John, you know that, right? Did you just say you use comp time to come to the meetings? That's, that's mighty good of you. The what, half of it's about what the material you're going to get here in a second, that can only be presented in executive session.